Yep, good to go.
Okay, it's January 18th, 2021, first GBOS meeting of the new year. This is a regular meeting and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Opens Meetings Act. I'll call this meeting to order. My name is Jerry Fox. I am co-chair and roads and utility supervisor. And Mike, you up next?
Yes, Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Brianna?
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Erin?
Erin Boone, Fire Department Supervisor.
And I don't see James. James, if you're out here, say hello. I don't see him. He probably joined a little bit. First thing is disclosures. I don't have any disclosures and I'll ask anybody else if they have any disclosures. Hearing, nope.
I have, I have two disclosures. Item 10, I have a household member who's a, who's on the Board of Directors for Girdwood Clinic. And item 11, it's being presented by Z Architect and I do some IT work for Z Architects.
I do not believe that is a conflict of interest unless any of the other board members have a problem with Mike voting on these issues or talking on these issues. Hearing no objection, I'm going to continue. We have agenda for January 18th. I would entertain a motion to prove, approve the agenda as written unless somebody has any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second and then I'll suggest an amendment. Item number six, I think we're actually going to end up changing that slightly from a resolution of support to an actual application, but we'll discuss that when we get to it.
Okay. So I guess we're not going to change that. We're going to approve it as written and we have a first and a second. So all in favor, just voice vote, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Next up is approving the minutes for December 21st, 2020, the regular meeting minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
We've to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Approve the minutes from the December 21st GBOS Girdwood Fire and Rescue Work Session Minutes Approval. Entertain a motion to approve as written unless somebody has any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called upon to talk to, phone or computer muted. To help the discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everybody's opinions. GBOS seats A and B are up for election in April municipal election. Following season is January 15th, which is passed to January 29th. So that's open. All members of Girdwood should apply. The MOA GBOS quarterly meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 25th at 4:00 PM via Zoom. It says via Zoom, but don't we do those via Teams?
Hey Jerry, are we at public? Are you asking for that yet?
No.
Nope.
Okay. We're, it will be via Teams. So that will be on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay. Introduce, where am I? Introductions, presentations and reports. So first up, we got a presentation for the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Service Recognition. Erin, or since you're the supervisor, are you going to read this one?
Yes, I have it in front of me.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a resolution of gratitude. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to honor the service of the following Girdwood Fire and Rescue firefighters. Whereas the following firefighters have provided years of compassionate fire and emergency medical services to Girdwood visitors and residents and responded to countless rescues and emergencies on the Seward Highway and in Turning An Arm. And whereas Captain Matt Olson has provided 23 years of continuous service to the community of Girdwood. And whereas Engineer Paramedic Richard Perry has provided 23 years of service to the community of Girdwood on top of the 23 years of service with Anchorage Fire Department and served as an Assistant Chief of Girdwood. Whereas Deputy Chief Manch Garhart, Captain Joshua Hewer, sorry if I get your, if I mispronounce your names, Lieutenant Steve Bartholomew, Firefighter Two EMT One Patrick Lovelace and Training Officer Nikki Olson have served for between 10 and 15 years of service. And whereas Lieutenant Anna Ferntheil, Lieutenant Connor Gamatch, Gamatch, Health and Safety Officer Lieutenant Gibson Gamel, Firefighter One EMT Two Sarah Howard, Administrative Officer Christina Dixon, Captain Chris Carson, Health and Safety Officer Lieutenant Jeremy Cuzmider, Firefighter EMT Two Kai Martin have served for, for between five and 10 years of service. Now therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks these firefighters for their service to the community of Girdwood, passed and approved by a vote XX by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors on this 18th day of January. Thank you.
Going to really vote on this, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Kyle, you, I guess you call the vote.
Sure. Just to make it official, can somebody recognize it with a second?
I'll second.
Oh yeah, so he's going to second and then we'll have further discussion. And of course I'll start with discussion that everybody's going to say the same thing. We want to thank the Fire Department, the people working there for all their great service. You know, this time of year, especially the last month on the highway has been very challenging and we just appreciate everything they do for our community. We can't express our gratitude anymore than that, but we really, really thank them. So, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Kyle, you're going to do roll call.
Okay. Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Erin Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero and thank you to the Fire Department.
Thank you.
And let's give her a big hand.
Yay.
It's too bad we can't be in person. Okay, next up is the legislative report. Kathy Geisel and the next senator will be Senator Roger Holland, Jennifer Johnson, the next representative will be Kath James Kaufman, Assembly Member John Willington or Susan LaFrance. I don't know.
James Kaufman just clicked in, so you might want to introduce that again. I just got him on.
Okay. So we're having legislative reports and if James Kaufman, if you have anything to tell us tonight or just introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hi, well, Representative-elect up until about one o'clock or so tomorrow. And the big story here is really just getting set up, getting staff trained and myself trained and, and all of that since I'm new to this. And, and then getting ready, of course, for the swearing in tomorrow. So nothing of a great deal of relevance to what goes on in Girdwood.
Well, thanks for at least joining our meeting and we appreciate, you know, anytime you can to give us information. So thank you.
Sure, pleasure. And yeah, I'll, I'll hang in. I've got a couple of other calls. We're pretty busy right now with the whole organization thing and all that. So I may tap out periodically, but no disrespect intended if that, that occurs.
Okay. I did see John on here. John Willton, you want to give us a little update, John?
I can. I might have to do a song and tap dance while my notes come up on my computer. So James, you do, James, you do a song and tap dance. I mean 30 seconds.
I'm going to standing death, so yeah, I can do that, so.
I saw you out, John, at the Diamond Center. Stand up.
Oh, you know, that was, I'm pleased to say that was a non-event, you know? We, we had reacted really, gosh, I know the mall did. And then at my store, I've had two big break-ins this end of last year. So I'm going really skittish about it. So we pulled merchandise out of the store and stuff and kind of knowing, probably nothing would happen, but boy, you sure feel bad if you got looted. So it's easier to be careful and it's kind of crazy to be thinking that way. It's really frustrating.
Yeah. Sorry to hear about your business. I saw it in the paper.
Yeah, we actually were doing okay and I actually spent all day today doing insurance stuff for it. So, you know, it's, it's not devastating, but you know, we, you know, it's tough, you know, we're hardening the stores, you know, putting in, you know, steel gates inside and at the, you know, entryways and stuff. And it's like, wow, you know? And it's, that's anyway, it's kind of mentally changes your perspective. But let me go through just a few things. I'll just hit some highlights on some things that are going on. The, I don't know if you guys are, you guys are pretty savvy on this stuff already, but on February 2nd, 7:00 PM through Halo, I'm going to do a class with one of their board members, sort of a class on a presentation on, you know, how, what to do about rezones and replats, you know, what's the process and how can you be effective dealing with it? And then Mark June is going to work with me on that one and he's got, he's a great, great case study for a rezone up off of DeArmen across the street from his house where he's, excuse me, they pulled all the stops out and they're not done yet. It's been pretty amazing what that neighborhood has done. We, as you know, extended the emergency proclamation through April 15th and, and I tried to, with Suzanne, to drop it down to four weeks, eight weeks and then, but that's where we ended up. Those didn't work. And, and you know, I think there's a lot of things, the emergency proclamation, people equate it with, you know, business closures and mass and all that stuff. And that's part of it, but there's really things that the mayor can do that we need to do to deal with COVID, particularly right now to get vaccinations done. And that's, you know, kind of essentially bypasses a lot of the slowness of purchasing, reassign, you know, city staff outside of their collective bargaining agreements and so on. So it's important to have that there. But of course it does say now you can have the emergency ordinances, which, you know, I think most people are supportive of the actions we've taken, but many aren't. It's been very hard for restaurants and bars and, you know, I can't, you know, it's just been brutal for them and it's not fairly, you know, people say we're all in this together, but not all in it equally. And it is really tough for some businesses. So, and, and the big question is, when does it end? And we need to figure that out because, you know, by some definitions could go on forever. And so we're working on that. We are also working on, starting at meetings are very early on, how does the municipality assert easements and rights away that they haven't really paid attention to? And I don't know if there's much of that in Girdwood, but I know throughout the hillside there's some and the catalyst for this was access to Campbell Lake, which the water on Campbell Lake is, the state tells us is a state water body and the public should have access to it. So we've got two easements and, and that should be allowed to have access, bring access there. And we kind of broaden it from that because it's actually an issue throughout the city. We're looking at ways to license shelters. If no more shelters open up, how do we make sure that they operate well, like most of them do? And prevent the bad examples like Brother Francis ended up being. We're also looking at changes to marijuana rules. So now that we've got several years of experience, you know, there's some things we have in there that just aren't doing any good. We ought to just pull them out and there might be some things we would add. There's also, I don't know if it affects you guys, the non-motorized plan is out for review and I don't think that affects Girdwood, but the rest of Anchorage where you visit, it's mostly focused on bike and pedestrian and not kind of trails that, you know, aren't kind of urban based, but, but that's something to take a look at. I think it's got another 30 days of review. We are also looking at, there's a, the kind of ballot proposition that was proposed to be added and we haven't added it to the ballot yet. That would be for APD kind of IT stuff and 911 call center and also includes body cams. And it's not really a bond, it's to approve a long-term lease of the equipment they need to do this, which is similar to something we did for the Fire Department in 2020. And that's got some interesting responses. So we're looking at maybe doing that or just paying for it out of the regular operating budget, which would be pulling a couple million dollars out of somewhere. And that's a lot of money, you know, if that's cops, you know, that's, that's, you know, eight, nine, 10 cops, you know, and every, you know, pulling off and we've struggled to build, rebuild it or it's something else. So we're looking at different ways to do that. The, what do we have? Assessments came out and I know you had a class on that or a presentation at your previous meeting and, and I know Girdwood got, I think, a 15% or more increase, 13% for homes, 5% for condos. And I haven't heard anyone complain yet, but I imagine people just got their green cards. I got mine a couple of days ago. We did something that, resolution to really start creating a government-to-government protocols with the native village of Occlutna. And that was something that's been worked on for over a year. There was some fear that it's connected with opening up gambling out at a native allotment in Birchwood. There isn't really a connection, it's just something that needs to be done. We have a native, you know, tribe that is federally recognized within our borders and we really, we've had bad relationships over the years and now they're good. It's kind of, this is the time to set up kind of protocols for dealing with them. And, and in my view, a kind of input has been like what we do with Girdwood, kind of regular meetings, a lot of contact and, and a structure for, you know, you guys to say, hey, here's what we need, you know, and how to get there. And so I'd like to see that the native village of Occlutna would have some kind of, something similar to the relationship that we built with Girdwood. So anyway, those are some highlights, can answer questions and, and hope you guys are never bashful about calling or emailing me.
I'll start with the questions. If you did a lease for the police, including the body cams, would that fall within the tax cap or outside the cap?
That would be above the tax cap.
Okay. And what was my other, I can't remember my other question. So I'll ask if anybody else has a, oh, the assessor thing, since the green cards have come out, I think the assessor's going to get lots of calls.
But anyway. It was very abstract three weeks ago or four weeks ago and now it's a little green card in your mailbox.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions for John?
Yeah, I was going to say the, if you haven't, sorry. If you haven't heard anything yet, you will do soon about the assessment. We're definitely hearing quite a lot in the community. I also had a question, the non-motorized, I think that, is that AMATS, under AMATS?
You know, it was funded through AMATS and that's why I doubt that Girdwood is included, but.
Yeah.
And it turned out to be very urban. It was supposed to include trails, which would be important for the hillside and things like that, but they kind of pulled that out for another effort.
And then my third question was actually on the topic of hillside. The, the issue of that access, does that directly involve any of the issues around access to Trugatch State Park on the hillside?
You know, I think it would somewhat. That, that, most of the access up there is, the requirements that if you develop a large parcel up there and some divided it, that you will have to provide, you know, if you're up against a park, you have to provide access to that public land. And so that's almost more future things and that's in this regard, not such a worry because we know that that will have to happen. But I just know through neighborhoods on the hillside, there's road connections, you know, they're platted and some trail connections that just have never been asserted over the years. So people, you know, don't really pay much attention to their plats. So, you know, a shed goes on it, a grill or something like that or a deck and it's not really their property and they don't necessarily know it. So in the few cases where I've been involved where city has gone and said, well, actually that's not your property, you need to move your stuff, it's not really gone well. You know, people have been really frustrated and, and so we're just trying to look, what are its the current status? And how do we make it less painful for people and, but get some of those back? You know, a lot of those are, you know, ways where you could walk from here to there a whole lot faster than, you know, I had one near my house and it would have made walk, my son walking to west or to south high, you know, 10, 12 minute walk instead of miles going along the platter, you know, the regular streets.
Erin?
Yeah, I just had a question about, I was curious what's going on with the leash law? I've been hearing little snippets, but that's coming up in your meetings, isn't it?
Well, I've heard a lot about it too for about six, seven, eight months now and I, it is still in front of animal control and they're taking input. So we haven't seen anything yet. And, and my experience with animal control, the couple of issues that we've had is they will work it and they'll work with people. And, and so if you have an issue, definitely get involved with their process and I, I don't know when it would come to us. If ever, they may bail on it, who knows?
Okay. They're taking comments now, you think?
That's my understanding. I saw an email from Single Track Advocates the other day that said that. Send me an email, I can forward that if you didn't get it.
Okay, thanks, John.
Any other questions for John? Anybody from the public? I see a hand, there was a hand raised.
Hey, hey John, this Tim, what's your email address?
Weddletonj@muni.org. So it's W E D D L E T O N J at M U N I dot org.
At M U N I.
Julie has her hand raised.
Yeah, I see it now. Thanks. So Julie?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Weddleton and to the rest of the Anchorage Assembly for the unanimous vote regarding Occlutna and establishing the government-to-government relationship. I think that's a really positive step forward for the municipality and thank you again for doing that.
You're welcome. Me, no, and it's been a huge education for me, a lot of this has never been part of my area. But we've also had some conversations with other tribes in the summer. We're talking about the alcohol taxes coming and, and some thought, we should talk to tribes. We got a huge amount of people, they're not based in Anchorage, but their people are here. And I don't know, there were a dozen or so in that conversation, it was a Zoom thing. And, and they said, yeah, we really want to have a way to connect with our people in Anchorage and help them. That's our goal, you know, a lot of them are struggling. And, and they said, way we can help is just providing them office space to meet with their tribal members. And I go, wow, that's not a high bar, you know? So just getting to talk to them is, you know, they want to work with us on all kinds of stuff. So, so it's exciting. I think that'll continue. That's, that's going to be good for Anchorage.
As always, John, thank you very much for attending our meetings. I appreciate your steadfast coming to our meetings.
Yeah, happy to be here. So I'll hang out if you're done with me now.
I think we are. Next up is supervisor reports. First up is public safety. I don't know if James is on here yet or if the police chief is on here, public safety director, do you know if he's on here?
Police chief couldn't make it tonight, but I could just give a quick update on New Year's events and holidays. We, you know, it was a different New Years this year with nothing going on up at the resort. So there wasn't a centralized event that drawn a lot of people to one location. Instead, many people having smaller gatherings throughout the valley. Woody Police, we're, we're busy that night and responding. We did run the first impound yard for, for the valley and they did impound several cars that were claimed the next morning. Fred's towing did a good job of making that happen for us and the coordination there between the police and them worked out. So, so that was a good experiment for hopefully large, have that prepared for the next large events when we can return to that. So, but for the most part, the holidays and the weekends have been busy for the Woody Police.
Thanks Kyle and yeah, appreciate getting that towing thing organized. That is a big deal for future events. So thanks. Next up, I guess it's me, roads and utilities. So December has been a very terribly busy month for road crew with lots of sanding and snow. It was kind of an expensive month, but I think we came in right at budget for 2020 and a big thanks for Kyle for monitoring the roads and managing the road so well and the economics of it all. The first reimbursement for the crosswalk flasher has been received from DOT, that's a big deal. And Kyle's working on the second and I believe the Alberg repave should be out for bid this next month sometime, Kyle?
Yeah, end of this month, the first week of February.
And what else did I have? Oh, not much. Anybody have a problem with roads? You can call me, you can call Kyle. Just be aware, we're sanding a lot, but we can't sand your road every single day with this weather. It's just not economic, so. Next up is Parks and Rackets Cemetery. Brianna?
Yes. Okay, the Trails Committee meeting was January 5th and update there is the staff is working on operations and safety plans required to open the hand tram aiming for summer 2021. And the MOA election and changes in administration are the potential challenges to this. The Trails Committee discussed two additional GVSA summer staff and summer 2021 with CARES Act funding. There were elections for officers and the 2021 officers are Carolyn Brodin is the chair, Deb Essex and Barb Cruz are vice chairs and Kaylee Harrison is the treasurer. Also, thank you to groomers. Any questions on that before I go to cemetery? Okay, I have a cemetery update that was submitted by Tommy O'Malley. So since I haven't given any update lately, this one will be a little bit more detailed. The Girdwood Cemetery is assisting with the Eagle River Birchwood effort to establish a cemetery in North Anchorage. And the process is being followed closely with Chair Tom Looney and using Girdwood's experience to help their project along. The Girdwood Cemetery is working with Robin Ward at HLB and Jack Goodno, a nationally-known cemetery expert who helped with our cemetery design and who has been hired to help Eagle River work through their process. HLB gave Eagle River a number of sites for consideration and they have three to choose from that they've narrowed down. But the goal of putting forth a bond for construction of both cemeteries on April 2021 municipal ballot has been moved to April 2022 to allow Eagle River to catch up with Girdwood's shovel-ready plan. The imperative to build these new cemeteries is because Anchorage Memorial Park, which was established in 1915, will reach capacity for public burials within seven years. When Tommy O'Malley met with Anchorage Cemetery Advisory Board this month, they suggested adding two new members to their board, one being from Girdwood and one from Eagle River. This will require assembly approval and the idea has support already from John Willton and Crystal Kennedy and others, Tommy O'Malley said. So their next meeting is February 4th and I'm curious if, I asked Tommy, but I didn't hear back, if we need to decide or suggest at this meeting, a member, and I could be that member to meet with the Anchorage Cemetery Advisory Board representing Girdwood, presumably with Tommy, and then maybe there's an Eagle River person that's willing. Anyone have anything to add about that?
I don't. Yeah, I would just say probably just get with Tommy and see what his thought is.
Okay. And I had one more other question, kind of a roads question, but it was brought up at the Trails Committee meeting about parking at Auralburg. Because that parking lot is pretty small and all the trails that it serves on a busy or a quiet day, they no parking on the right signs that are up? If, if, I guess there's not really a solution, but the idea was can we all just park on the right side of the road and not get towed and be fine on that extension?
Kyle, do you have any?
Well, I think it's idea that we can explore with traffic. Those signs were installed just to alleviate, well, one was for, was for snow plowing in the winter because we didn't want to overflow from people trying to park at the tram. But I think now that we've lived at that highway, that road a couple of years and the way our maintenance program works, that most of the time we're there about five or six in the morning clearing that road, it wouldn't be as much as. it wouldn't be as much of an issue. So I'm open and favorable to it. I'll explore it with traffic to see if they have any issues with it and let you know.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Wonder Kyle if we can, if we do something about no overnight parking? Because I know occasionally people use it for, for trips out to that country into, into the park and places like that. So you do sometimes see things parked overnight, but we probably don't want that on the roadway.
Yeah, we could probably explore changing the signage to, to represent no overnight parking. It may be no parking from midnight to 8:00 AM, just so we have clearing there. So yeah, no, that's a good point.
Okay, I think that's it for Parks and Rec. Going on to Fire Department, Erin?
Yeah, get my notes here. I attended a couple of fireboard meetings last week. They had a regular meeting and then a work session to talk about budget issues. And just, I'll just share some of the discussion that they had. There was recognition that as the number of homes and property values have increased in Girdwood, the Fire Department budget has not increased proportionally to cover providing services to these additional homes and residents. And it was also discussed, and I know the chief has shared before, that Girdwood Fire and Rescue does not currently have enough funding to provide both EMS and fire staffing per municipal code and NFPA standards. And this would be to staff 24/7 for EMS and six individuals available for fire response at any time. The board identified a need to understand what the community's expectations are for fire and EMS response. And they're looking to do that in the coming months. And they talked about different ways to generate revenue. One is the additional EMS funds that Girdwood could get when the AFD contract is finalized. And also increased funding from property taxes is another source. And they talked about that, you know, we're about half a mil off from the tax cap right now. And they, they plan to continue working this issue in upcoming meetings and provide a recommendation to GBOS. So I think the other items we're going to be talking about later in the meeting, so save it for then. You're on mute, Jerry.
Thank you. Chief, you want to just give us a update on the Fire Department? We're going to talk about the financials, I think, down to number five or number seven. So other than financial, give us an update.
Yeah, sure. So 2020, we had 399 calls. EMS was 59% of that, so a little down from normal, which was basically, I think, because the, the resort was closed. So 20 fire calls in 2020, 11 hazardous condition calls, 33 service calls, 21 false alarm calls, 77 good intent calls. And so we had our annual, as Erin mentioned, we had our annual meeting the other day. We gave out service awards, talked about sort of strategic direction for 21. And other than that, it's been a super busy month for us so far. We've had 20 calls. We had a smoke in a structure yesterday at Olympic Loop, which turned out to be an appliance malfunction, but that could have been a structure fire. And then we did have a structure fire the other day on Tolstoy at 6:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, we were called out for that. So yeah, staffing continues to be a challenge. We're pretty good, well-staffed on the weekends, but during the evening hours, so the 6:00, 6:00 PM, 6:30 to 6:00 AM is, that's when we rely on volunteer staffing or paid on-call staffing. Those have been challenging to fill all those slots. And so that's one of the things that we talk to the board about is how to make sure that we always have ALS coverage and always have at least another engineer or a couple of other people on duty. And that's it for my report.
Thanks. And we'll talk about that later. I am going to interrupt. I believe that Senator Geisell has joined us. And we've already done our legislative report, but if she wanted to say anything, and I would just like to say thank you for your service, Senator.
Well, thank you very much, Jerry. Yeah, I just signed on. Again, I'm always interested in what the Board of Supervisors is talking about. I'm here in Juneau actually today for some last meetings before the next legislature takes over. Approving some additional CARES Act money for some small businesses, also homeless, some funding for homelessness and rent assistance. So that's going to be great help for Alaskans. Thanks very much, Jerry.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm trying to get that muted off. Okay. Next up on our supervisor reports is land use. Mike Edgerton, you could go through all three of your topics.
Certainly. So we had the elections, most of the land use topics we're going to be discussing later tonight. But we had elections and a fairly significant change. So Kevin McDermott got voted in as chair and Diana Stram and Shannon O'Brien as vice chairs. So Brian, after we had said goodbye to Mary Thomas, who served for a couple of years as vice chair, and Brian, who served for, I don't know, about 250 years or something as chair. So a big, a big change. And I'd like to thank both Mary and especially Brian for all their service on land use over the years. The Title 21, Chapter 9 review we'll be talking about later. Housing Working Group, we had a really interesting meeting last week where we talked about alternative structures and there was lots of good information shared. It's been actually very satisfying working in that group over the last year or two because I think we started off with a very shallow understanding of what the issues were. And I know that last week's meeting, we were getting well into details and there was lots of information sharing. And it was, it was a really productive, productive couple of hours. I think that's it.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, we have public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subject not listed on the agenda. And I see Julie, your hands up.
Thank you. Julie Raymond McCoobian, Box 924. I had two things. First, I wanted to acknowledge today is an important day. That being the setting aside of this day as a celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, as well as a day to reflect on his many accomplishments, progress of the civil rights movement, and even as a day to reflect on the work that still needs to be done in, in our country and in our communities and by each of us. So I wanted to acknowledge that and I'm grateful that we have this day as a federal holiday. Separate from that, I have a request. I've requested information about a 2020 Girdwood Board of Supervisors resolution several times via email with no responses. So I'm here to again, request an update on the commitment that the Board of Supervisors made back in September of 2020 with the resolution against racism. That was Resolution 2020-11, which stated, therefore, let it be resolved. Therefore, let it be further resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors also commits to convening a community forum on this topic. So I'd like to know what actions have been taken towards following through on that commitment to hold that forum, where this stands in terms of planning. So I'd appreciate if you could share some information about that.
So I think Mike's been working on that.
I can talk to that. So we've reached out to, I don't think it'd be, well, the commitment is for a community meeting or a community involvement. So it would be much broader than just a GBOS meeting. So I've reached out to various organizations, both formally and informally within the community and outside of the community. I reached out to a number of consultants who work in this area as well. I don't think we have a funding source for doing this, so unless I can find a grant or something else, that may be a little difficult to do it with a sort of professional, unless they're prepared to volunteer their time, and I don't necessarily think they should be. That's where we stand at the moment. So as I said, we've had about, I've had emails with probably about five or six groups so far.
Do you have a timeline for when this gathering might occur?
I'd like to do it in the spring. I think that's a reasonable time.
Thanks.
What I'd like to do.
One other follow-up question. Does the Board of Supervisors have unallocated funds that could be spent on hiring someone to facilitate this kind of event?
But Kyle can probably answer this. My understanding is unfortunately we're fairly limited in what we can spend money on. But we can, we're limited to the, to the areas of our tax raising powers. But Kyle, can you speak to that?
Yes, sorry, my, okay, I'm off. You could, you could probably spend it out of Parks, you know, Parks is, you know, formerly named cultural and recreation. So if we would like to, we could look at something within that. One of our components in there, we may just, we'll fund less and we could put money towards this event. So you just let us know what you come across and we'll see what funding strings we can use.
Thank you. That had not occurred to me. So thanks, Julie, for prompting that discussion. That was very valuable. Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, I know Tim wants to talk in public comment. Tim, you out there?
Yeah, Kyle, do you, did you get the latest plat there?
Yes.
So this is just an update on the plat that I've been trying to do down there. I'm struggling with the planning and zoning as to what they're going to allow on this property. In, in Chapter 9, it says that, you know, the size of the lots can be 10,400 square feet, but it, I can't do them that size because they also say that I, I can't use these lots for anything less than four or five units per acre. They, they have this piece of property. It's weird. They have it zoned so that I can't do less, which is the exact opposite of what most people are looking for. I'd like to zone down. They will not allow me to. So I can't build. They allow a lot of 10,400 square foot, but they don't allow a lot. It has to be 12,500 in order to be a multifamily and they won't allow anything less than multifamily. So I had lots drawn up that were 10,400 and I had to redraw because I wouldn't be able to do anything on them. And as the, the property presently stands with the conflicting things in the chapter, I actually have no permitted use for this property right now as it stands. And we're trying to figure out why that is and how that happened. And, and I'm also trying to straighten out the drunken zoning line to the, to the south of the property that was originally zone GR4 SL, which was four to eight per acre. And the rest of it's zone GR4. And that line, I think they, I don't know who drew the line. And I don't know why people from the mini draw things like that, but that's an impossible line to plot around. So I'm trying to straighten that line out and I'm trying to get calls back from the mini. But when I call the mini, I don't get a call back for several weeks. I can't go down there. I can't get ahold of anybody. I've talked to Michelle several times and every couple of weeks, maybe I get ahold of her. As far as getting ahold of anybody else down there, it's almost impossible. No one will give me any answers as to where we are or our work, where we're going. The last conversation I had with Michelle, I was, I was a bit frustrated and I said, you know, I'm just going to turn this plat in with or without your support. And if I can just turn it in with a non objection, to me, that's a win. Because I can see that I'm not going to get, there's just too many conflicting things in Chapter 9. And so no one down there is willing to say, put their name down on what I can or can't do with the property. So I'm going to go forward with it and, and fight my battle with planning and zoning because I'm just not getting answers out of planning, out of the planning department. So this is where we're at. I'm going to put this in and once this gets in, we'll come back with the packet and go through the meetings again. But trying to straighten out the zoning line and I went down to just eight lots off of Alliantz Highway and one track off the back. That's about it.
So I have a quick question. I, I looked at this a while back and I thought that if it was over 20,000 square feet, then it had to be multifamily or something. Is that right?
That's, if you read, if you read it in the underintent, it says, under GR4, it says, you can, you can do a house or duplex if it's existing lots under 20,000 square feet. That's the, and that's in there. Now, in the back of the, of Chapter 9, it says how big you can do the lots, how wide they can be and things like that. And so obviously one page wasn't in line with another page because why would they let you make lots that are smaller than 12,500 square feet if you can't do anything with them but multifamily? So, and then they don't want me to do anything less than, in the, in the gap, it's five units per acre. And in, and in the Chapter 9, it's four units per acre. So they're not even on the same page there. And so they will not allow a single family house or even a duplex on any of these lots. And I can't zone down is what it seems to be. And I believe that's simply because somebody that used to work at the mini thought that was a good idea before they moved garzono. So this is what we're stuck with. This isn't anything to do with what anyone in Girdwood wants. I'm, I'm sure Girdwood would prefer to have single family lots there, but that's not what we're going to be allowed to do.
So are you going to be coming back to the board and asking for a resolution from us?
Yeah, I'll just be asking to get another resolution since this one's changed just a little bit, you know? And, but I'm going to take this, you know, that pass planning and go right to planning and zoning and just try to get this, get this moving. And it's, it's been quite frustrating.
So are you planning, you want, you want to be on the agenda for next month?
No, I got to hand this in and then, and then I'll come back. You know, I, I want to do this in the summer, so I got time. So I'm not in a huge hurry. I just, just wanted to give an update. And I showed that I went from, I think I had 13 lots in the first one and a little road with a little dog leg in it. And I just, I just made it simpler and I'm just, I'm simplifying it to the, to the point where I hope I can get it passed.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, you may have already said this, Tim, but I missed it. So is this, which process is this going through? Is this going through a subdivision process or is it a plotting process, a brigade subdivision?
It'll be a plating and zoning process, you know, it'll go to plating and zoning.
So this is a replat, not a subdivision?
It's, you know, it's not a short plat. It'll be a long plat. And, and, and it'll be just a regular, but generally what you do is you go to the planning and zoning. I mean, you go to the, the, you know, planning down there and you work with them and come up with something that they will, they will that, you know, that they will go with, that they'll put their, they'll, they'll sign off on, but
Right.
It just doesn't
Pre-application conference.
Sign off on anything. So, you know, I can't just wait forever. So I'm just going to. And, and you know, I'm not sure they're not going to sign off with it. The last time I talked to Michelle, what she said was that she may just not object to it. She might not go as far as to, to put her, yes, this will, will accept that because I'm putting, they still had that easement road in there. So I gave them a 30-foot easement. You can see where it, it says it in kind of, oh, half, two thirds of the way back, I got a easement across there to make room for that access road. And then that easement will go away after 10 or 20 years. So it'll be an easement to appease them that will go away after 20 years or something like that. That's the stickler is the access road still, among other things.
Okay, anybody out there have any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. I was thinking the original, your original plan showed development of some lots beyond Barron Avenue, is that right? And then plus these off of the Alliantz Highway?
I just gave up on the ones back there. It's just, I really want to do this. And I think if I, if I throw those lots, those lots back there are just going to have to be in the future, five years from now or something. And you, once you, once you plot it, you can't do it, you can't replat it, like I can't plat this. And then try to replat that one. And you, once you, once you plot it, you can't do it, you can't replat it. Like I can't plot this and then try to replat that one back there next year. You have to wait five years. So, you know, either that or, or, you know, it's, it's, it's just, uh, what I gotta do to make, make it move forward.
Yeah, um, yeah, it makes sense. Um, just one other question. So your intent is for these lots off of Aliens Highway to be single family or?
No, I mean, that would, I would like that, but no, they're not going to allow that. Uh, and they're going to have to be multifamily and they have to be depending on whether you go by the gap or chapter nine, four or five minutes per acre. They will not let me build less.
Okay. So how many is that per each lot approximately?
Uh, so that would be about, well, that's about six acres there. So it'd be about 30 units would be the minimum you could build. Uh, you could build more, but that's the minimum they're going to allow.
Okay.
And this will be, this will be coming back before, in front of you. I just, I, I didn't really want to get on you. I just wanted to do it under comments and be done with it. Let you guys move on. So that's all I have.
Yeah. So once it actually, once there's actually an application, then it'll come in front of us.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. And multiple public meetings through the process as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Any, anybody else have public comment? I don't see any hand raised. Not seeing any, I am going to go on. Uh, next up at public comment is all business, GBOS updates, Girdwood Community Council's structured procedure for audit servicer and request, review and final approval of updated GBOS rules and procedures. So Mike or I think you, you or Aaron are going to speak to this?
I'll start and then Aaron can add some things. So, um, we haven't made any more progress on, um, the first two items because we have to, um, effectively vote, um, on the third one. So the last meeting, we, um, we did vote on, uh, changes to rules and procedures. However, when reviewing, um, going back through and reviewing everything else in the rules and procedures, uh, there's actually an article in there that says it has to, um, uh, any changes have to be public for 28 days. Um, so we hadn't, we got 28 days of public notice at the, um, uh, at the last meeting. So we're going to have to, uh, revote on the same changes this time. Um, so that's what I want to focus on this meeting.
Yeah. And I don't know if, do you think it'd be helpful for me to go through kind of a summary of the changes again or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, um, let's see. So in section two, uh, we added a paragraph about, um, that any items not addressed here, um, in the rules and procedures are handled in accordance with Robert's rules of order. Um, there were several just kind of grammatic or, you know, um, typo type corrections. I won't go over those. Um, under article two committees, we identified our, um, existing committees as standing committees. And then we also listed us, we added a section for subcommittees and said that the standing committees described above may create ad hoc subcommittees, um, for the purpose of working on specific projects of that committee. Under meetings, regular meetings, um, we added some words about, let's see, um, the meeting may be extended for up to one hour, but not go beyond 11:00 PM.
Erin, as you go, can you just tell me what page you're on and I'll try to get to those pages?
Yeah, I'm looking at my copy, so I hope the pages are the same.
Or what section or what?
Yeah. So I'm under article three meetings. It's page five in mine.
Page five. Yeah.
Um, and then each agenda item is limited to a maximum of, maximum of 60 minutes of discussion unless the duration is extended by a majority vote. We added that sentence at the end of regular meetings. And then, um, on page six, we added a section I called agenda items and meeting materials. Uh, we talked about public comment period and, um, that it is limited to three minutes maximum per person. Uh, we added that meeting materials, uh, will be assembled and made available to the public at least 24 hours before a meeting. And then items, this is, um, kind of one that we discussed more. Items of business other than standing items or reports shall be assigned to a member. This member will introduce the item and will work with any petitioner to ensure materials are prepared and available for the meeting. Items referred from a subcommittee or from a committee or subcommittee will be assigned to the member with that responsibility. Otherwise, the chair or co-chair will assign the item to a member. Um, let's see, next major change.
Should we just say something more about that last thing? So basically it means that, um, every item except for the standing item should have, um, at least one, uh, member of the board who's kind of responsible for shepherding it through and has some background knowledge on the item.
Yeah, we did discuss that, um, the board member doesn't need, necessarily need to agree with the item. It's basically they're, um, responsible for um, shepherding it and having some knowledge of it prior to the meeting. So the next major
I was just going to say, it's something we've been doing anyway. I think in general, we're just formalizing.
Yep. So page 16 is the next change, article 12, uh, correspondence from the GBOS. This, we just updated the language so that it, so that we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Um, there was some verbiage in there about, um, emailing. And so we just cleaned that up. Let's see.
Erin, what page was that again, that last one?
There's page 14 in the version you have.
Okay. Kyle, I heard page 16.
Oh.
16 with all the comments in the version which, uh, Aaron has.
Yeah.
And then the other major changes were we, um, we added an attachment, uh, which is the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. And, um, we moved, let's see. Shoot. We moved a section to, um, a second attachment. Help me out, Mike. What is the title of that conditional?
That was the conditional, yes, the conditional use, um, process, although, um, there's a task to broaden that out to more than just conditional use, um, which Marco and I are going to be looking at.
Okay. And that was article 10 in the original procedures and that's becoming its own attachment.
The intention of having these separate attachments is they can stand alone as separate documents and other committees can adopt them if they choose.
Those were the major changes.
Okay. Anybody for the board? Have we kind of voted on this and talked about it last meeting? Anybody have any further comments from the board? Hearing none, I will ask if there's any comments from the public.
Julie has her hand raised.
Julie?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, Julie Raymond Yocobian had a, a couple of suggestions with regard to the standards of conduct in particular. And, um, I had submitted these prior to the meeting in writing, but I would like to summarize them briefly if that's okay. Okay, um, my first recommendation, uh, is to make it a little bit clearer at the start of the standards that they also apply to supervisors and officers of GBOS bodies. Um, currently, right now, it says that they apply to community members. And I realize that supervisors and officers are community members, but I think it's worth a clarifying amendment, um, to specify that supervisors and officers, um, that these standards also apply to them as well. That was my first recommendation. Um, my second recommendation had to do with, um, violations of the standards and how recognition of those standards, of those violations proceeds. Uh, right now, the way it's written, potential violations that occur during the meeting must also be raised during the meeting. And I think there should also be an option for people to raise the issue of violations of the standards after a meeting has occurred. Um, the reason for that being, it can be really difficult for many people to even speak up at a meeting in the first place. And I think it's potentially doubly difficult, uh, at least for some people to then speak up about a standards violation, um, as it's happening or right after it's happening. So I'd like there to be an option for people to raise the violation, um, you know, after the meeting has concluded. And I don't know if there would be a timeline on that, like within a week or within a day or, or what, but I think that would be, um, a valuable amendment as well. And my third recommendation has to do with the enforcement section of the standards. Um, it wasn't very clear to me and perhaps it was discussed at the December meeting, which I was not able to attend. But it, it's not clear to me why it requires a majority vote for a violator of the standards to be sanctioned or to be removed from a meeting. My thinking is that, you know, if the standards are clearly written and if they're clearly violated, then the meeting chair or other officer at a meeting should be able to enforce the repercussions that you've outlined, such as taking the floor back from someone or, or asking them to leave a meeting. So my recommendation there would be that um, chairs and officers be allowed to enforce the standards once they've been violated. And if that wasn't clear, I'm happy to discuss further.
Hey, anybody have any comments about Julie's comments?
Yeah, I'll respond to, I'll respond to them in reverse order. Um, so the intent, and I think the language actually does say this, the, the intent is that, uh, the enforcement is done by the chair. However, if the chair doesn't do anything, um, or does something which the majority of the members disagree with, then there's an override option. Um, so I think the actual language is, we read, it reads to me that way. Um, I knew that was the intent. Um, maybe somebody else can, can read through it and just check it to, they agree with my interpretation. Um, so the, it's, the chair can act, um, and it's absent such opinion, uh, the majority of the members can, can sort of vote to act. Um, and then the same with, um, section A, it's only an overrunning of the chairs, of the chair. So, um, if the, so this is for situations where, um, you know, maybe the chair takes personal offense at something that nobody, other members of the board don't think, uh, something was, uh, beyond the line. So majority there can override the chair's decision. This is fairly standard language. Um, the, I'm trying to remember what the second point was now. I said I'd do the reverse order and I didn't write them down. Um, the first point about members, I, we thought this was covered by community, but, uh, I understand your, understand, uh, the, the request about clarification. And I don't particularly want to change it because we, we spent a bit of time on the wording here, but, uh, again, I know the intent was to have, um, have the, you know, use community as inclusive term for everybody. Um, and sorry, I do, I've forgotten your second point, Julie.
Um, the second one was about when violations of the standards have to be raised.
Yeah. So the, the sanction only applies within the meeting. Um, so I, I understand, I understand your point, although the reason you're asking it, I think, but what would the, what would the outcome of that actually be? So, I mean, the, if you, if you, if there was, um, a question raised after the meeting, the outcome is either somebody stops talking during that particular item, which obviously can only be applied during the meeting, or they're prevented from talking during the rest of the meeting, which again can only apply during the meeting. So there's nothing which goes beyond that meeting. Um, so I'm not sure what the, what the purpose of that would be or what the outcome you'd expect from that would be.
Mr. Chair, to reply, I think there's a couple of things. The first is that, um, I think having the option to bring the violation of the standard to light, um, you know, within a reasonable amount of time after the meeting has occurred still serves a purpose. First is again, allowing community members who aren't comfortable, um, in what I'm assuming would be a, a conflict type situation, to still have an opportunity to note that they feel the standards were violated. And I also don't actually think that the, um, the potential ramifications for violating the standards go far enough in, in my opinion, but I'm assuming there's, you guys aren't going to change that. But I think it would also provide an opportunity for, um, the chairs or officers to either speak to that person or just to make it a matter of record that a, a standard was violated and that that violation was, was raised by a member of the public. Um, I think it serves the same purpose to put someone who's violating standards on notice that it's, the behavior is unacceptable.
So I think my response would be that's the, that's the responsibility of the, of the chair or the majority of the members, uh, in the meeting to do so. Um, it's, it's not something that, that means, as written, and I think in, again, fairly standard process, uh, this wouldn't be the responsibility of members of the public.
And so it's something that will regularly occur and that we have evidence will happen.
I don't think it should regularly occur at all. I think we generally have very well behaved, uh,
So you have
By writing this down.
That supervisors and officers will raise these things when they see them occur.
I think that's, that's what we're writing down. We're making it clear what expectations are. And it actually makes it, it makes it much easier, um, having this written down. It's not a, um, it's not something you have to kind of come up with a set of criteria and, uh, apply on the fly. We have this written down as our part, as our procedures beforehand. So we can point to a particular, we can point to a particular issue, um, in the meeting and, uh, refer to that. And we have some, you know, we have some, we have some evidence and criteria, um, predefined. So it actually makes the process easier when you're chairing a meeting.
Well, I hope so, because in my experience, that, that hasn't happened in the past. Regardless of whether or not these were written down, they're kind of like basic ethical moral standards of conduct. So, um, thanks for, for listening to my suggestions. I hope that some of them can be incorporated.
I'll make a comment. Um, you know, I'm glad we're doing this and as Mike said, you know, kind of clarifying these rules, but I mean, I think we do a pretty good job of having a civil discussion and all you have to do is watch an assembly meeting and see how people of the public react in that. And I think we're lucky in Girdwood. Um, Julie has made some suggestions. I would entertain a motion if anybody wants to change the, that, the document that we have approved last time. And if so, if you raise your amendment now to the document, any of the supervisors? Hearing none, I will and ask for a vote on these changes to the, the procedures. I'd like to ask somebody to, um, what do I want to say here? Somebody has to
Make a motion.
Make a motion. Thank you.
Um, yes, I move to approve the, um, the standards of conduct. Are, are we doing all of them now? Are we doing everything?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the change, the proposed change to the Girdwood Rules and Procedures.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I call for further discussion, first from the board.
Um, I will say, I wouldn't be opposed to adding something, um, as Julie recommended to clarify that we're including board members, um, in, when we say community members, we could add something there. Um, at the, in the first sentence, I guess it would be.
That would take an amendment to the motion that was
There's some, yeah, I, I wouldn't support that. There's some difficulty, there's some, um, some subtlety about this because, um, we have to be careful about, um, preventing elected members speaking in meetings. So we have to be careful about what we expect standards there. There have, we have to be very careful about any, um, about preventing people from actually speaking, or preventing elected members of the body from speaking during meetings. So we have to be careful about the second section.
Yeah, the second, yeah. I do agree with that, the lower part, yeah. You'd have to differentiate between the two and it would get, could get complicated.
So we have a motion and a second. Erin, you're going to make an amendment to the motion?
No.
Any further discussion from the board? Further discussion from the public?
Julie had her hand raised. I'm sorry, Julie, I clicked the wrong button.
Julie? Nope, she has no further comment. I'll call for a vote. Kyle?
Jerry Fox?
Yes, in favor.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Mike Agington?
Yes, please.
Breonna Sullivan?
Yes.
And I don't think, James, have you joined us? No, I don't recognize him. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah.
Mike and Aaron.
Aaron and Mike, that, that was a lot of work, so thank you. Next up, number five, Girdwood Fired Rescue Updates and Requests. 2020 Budget and Forecasting for 2021. 2019 Billing for False Alarm in Out-of-Service Area. Responses to Portage Bird Indian. Update on MOA GFR Contract. Review Vehicle Replacement Schedule. Discuss Funding Options to Replace Engine 41. And Discuss Status of Area-Wide Bond to Replace Rescue 41. So, go ahead, I was going to ask, Erin or Chief, who's going to talk?
I could talk.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm going to make it simpler. Um, oh, my list just disappeared.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll bring it back. You gotta look at some real quick, but I'll bring it back.
Okay.
Start with the
I'll start, I'll start with the bond, the bond for Rescue 41. The bond for Rescue 41, it, it made it through consent on Tuesday. And then it will be back up for a public hearing as part of the bond package for area-wide bonding on the 26th. So I'll be at the assembly meeting on the 26th to hopefully usher Rescue 41 in through, to make sure it makes it onto the bond package for this next year. So that's that one. False alarm billing, I'm still negotiating back and forth with AFD on the false alarm billing. We had 21 false alarms last year before it was in the 30s. However, they're saying it's the same price that they're billing everybody. So I'm still negotiating with them on that. The Afisa contract's going really well. That's the Kenai Borough, they're reimbursing on time. That's been fabulous.
This one.
Other than that, the COVID, we did get that COVID grant that we had to spend in a very short timeframe in December, but we were able to pick up and purchase turnouts and a lot of things, other items that we needed that we hadn't been able to purchase. So we were able to do that, which I think is going to help us financially in the long run. So that's a super good thing, too. And then AFD contract this week, as well as giving the board, I've given them a minimum staffing model and a staffing model. And so I've sent that to AFD to say, is this the staffing model you agree with for the contract? And then based on what they agree with, then we'll provide the numbers for them for that. I haven't heard back from them, but of course today was a holiday for most municipal employees. And so that's, I think, where I am right now. We are still doing final, you know, it's mid-January, so we're still wrapping up our accounting for this last, for 2020. And that's where I am right now.
So last meeting, we talked, you know, we moved 70,000 over to finish out the year and you thought it'd be about 40. Does that still seem about right?
I, I will know probably within a week or so when we finally close out everything where we are.
Now, my next question would be, do you feel comfortable that we can get something resolved with EMS funding for first quarter revisions or before then?
Chief Hetrick and Chief Hetrick had mentioned to me that she felt that we would be getting a first quarter budget revision for EMS. I, again, send them, send them that minimum staffing, which is what they had requested for the contract, right? Minimum staffing. So I sent them a minimum staffing model and I haven't heard back yet. But again, that was just last week.
I'm hoping that we can get some sort of clarity before next Monday, when we go before, have our municipal meeting.
I would hope, I would hope so, too. So basically, my position on the contract haven't changed, hasn't changed. Anchorage Municipal Code says that the, that the municipality or the fire chief will provide a 24/7 ALS staffing across the municipality. And so to me, that would suggest that they would provide us money for ALS staffing. I would ideally think 24/7 versus the $23 and some odd change that they give us every hour to provide EMS staffing, fuel, training, and drugs and things like that. So so I, so, you know, you may recall with the contract, we asked for 24 staffing. They went, huh, how, you know, that seems wrong. I've given it back to them with the staffing model like they requested. And as soon as they agree to the staffing model, then I'll put a costing to it. I have the cost, the budget costing for positions, but yeah.
Well, thanks for all the work you're doing on this. It looks like Kyle has up the loan for the engine 41. And just for those ever listening in, engine 41 is different than rescue 41.
Engine 41 is the one that goes to the fire.
Right. And so engine 41 goes to a fire, rescue 41 goes to EMS. Rescue 41, we're getting through area-wide funding, bond. Where engine 41, we will have to pay through Girdwood taxes.
Correct. And, and so we have two options and we'd like the board to vote on it at next month. So we can include it with first quarter revisions if they do approve on it. But Girdwood Fire is looking at, needs to replace engine 41, it's end of life or coming up on it within two years. And so trying to be proactive so that we're not being reactive. We are looking at a minimum of a $600,000 loan and we would use 400,000 from the capital account, which we have in reserve right now, to purchase a $900,000 engine. 900,000 is probably on the higher end. Chief would try to work to get us, and, and, and for very practical reasons, a basic engine that doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles, but works well for the community to get us the best price on that. Just to give you a understanding, right now, interest rates are really good through a program that the Muni has with KeyBank. And so if we did a five-year loan, we could get a, a five-year term at 1.69. Our quarterly payments would be 31,000. And so the annual amount would be 125,000 to repay the apparatus over five years. We did a seven-year, it'd be a 1.83, and that would be quarterly payments of 22,000. We'll round up to 23,000. And the total there would be 91,517 for annual payment that we pay. So that'd be seven years, which would be close to what our capital contribution is right now. And, but a bit more, but so we would add that in. And so that would be added in each year to the operating budget and paid out of the operating budget to pay off the apparatus, which is a lot better than actual bonding. Bonding has higher interests and you're paying them back over 20 years. Whereas here, we would have these paid off at the maximum of seven years in this aspect. This, this is set up for areas like ours and also for like the utilities, which can't bond or don't really have success with bonding, as Anchorage has a lot more success with bonding. And that's why we're really focusing on the Rescue 41, which will be an area-wide purchase and be paid back by all the taxpayers at Anchorage who partake in the fire service area. And they're, oh, no, excuse me, everybody who partakes in the EMS area. So, so those will be the two options and we're, I'm open to questions, but we're hoping GBOS will approve this at the February meeting. One of the two options.
Okay, so next meeting, we're going to approve this. Just my thought as I'm looking at this is I would lean toward the seven-year term because it isn't that much higher of an interest rate and you have the flexibility, if we get toward the tax cap, we have an unexpected cost and you can always repay it early if you have extra money.
Correct. There's no penalty, penalty for early payoff. It's just basically like an auto loan.
I have just one question on the dollar amount for the loan. If the total's 900,000, we'd be using 400,000 of money that we have. Would it, would we just be borrowing 500,000 then?
Uh, yes, yeah, it would, it depends on what we get there. But I wanted to give example of what 600,000 looks like and what the payments look like if we go that level, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on what the final price of the apparatus is. And, and so that will determine how much we can pay from our reserves and how much we'll have to borrow.
So, yeah, that's a good point, Erin. I didn't notice that. That equals a million dollars, not 900,000 dollars. So these costs would be lower if it was actually 900.
Correct. Depending on how it plays out.
So I have a question, Kyle. You mentioned that the 900, oh, sorry, the 90,000 per year is sort of comparable to what we pay for capital. Would we, we would still be making a contribution to capital, wouldn't we? Otherwise, we end up in a situation where there's zero in the capital account for effectively five or seven years.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there are other capital, capital issues that will come up.
Yes, and, and Chief Weston has done a projection on capital needs. You know, some of the needs we can't fund, which would be under rescue, especially any water rescue that's outside the service area. But yeah, it, it would be a discussion through our budget process as to what our contribution plus our payment looks like, adding that into operating budget going forward.
Right.
But it is, it is a feasible, it is a practical thing to keep adding to your capital account because there will be things that come up and, you know, the fire department has a lot of equipment.
Yeah, or even, even the balance between what we have in capital as a down payment and
Correct.
We can balance that.
There'll be another apparatus just after this at some point in time, so.
My other facetious comment was you said there wouldn't be any bells and whistles. There will at least be a siren, I hope, though.
No, they're going to lean out the window and yell.
So the other thing, the other thing not to be Debbie Downer. But the other thing is that if the rescue, if Rescue 41 goes ahead on the bond, they've allocated 870,000 for it, which is a little low for it. So that wouldn't include all the extrication equipment that would need to be on it since our extrication equipment is 20 years old. So we are working with AFD on a bond for Rescue 41, not a bond, a, a grant for the three departments. They're putting in one federal grant to see if they can get new extrication equipment for all three departments. So, so like, looking forward into the crystal ball of the future. I know we have been kind of high maintenance over the last couple of years, but it's really sort of regrowing and getting the fire department back on a good foundational footing and a good plan moving forward. And so after these two big apparatuses are, or apparatus are funded or replaced, our next items in the future capital plan would be starting to replace the three command vehicles that are, that are aged. And then again, our, our next big fundraising goal, I was able to take most of the fundraising goals and, and take care of all those by a lot of little small items by the CARES Act funding. And so our, our next big thing will be eventually the boat fundraising. So that's kind of where we are. So three command vehicles and the boat are sort of in the future on the next sort of big items to sort of fix other than our, again, our staffing issue.
So I'm kind of, I think we're kind of wrapping this up, but I'm going to say, you know, like you just said, Chief, you've done a lot of good work on this. You know, if we can get Rescue 41 on the EMS bond, we can get Engine 41 on a loan and we can get the contractor negotiations to increase our EMS funding. Things will really be a lot better for the fire department. And I know you spent a lot of work on all these things, you and Kyle, so I just want to say thanks.
Oh, well, good. I mean, I, I do feel like it has been like a three-year project. And if we could just get the funding for the staffing sorted out, then I think we're going to be in a really good spot. So, and, and get these two, two large items, because quite frankly, if we would have had to keep applying for grants to try and get these, we would have been doing that for a long time, when we probably would surpass the end of life for the, for the apparatus. So thank you to everybody. I know that we have been high maintenance, but thank you for everybody for working with us and the community support.
And again, just, I'll probably check in with Kyle, but, you know, it would be good for us to know before next Monday how the contract thing is going.
We'll work that from both sides.
Okay. Anything further, Chief?
Nope.
Anything further from anybody on the board or the public on the fire department?
I'll just say go ahead, Erin. I'll just add, you know, with these upcoming expenses for the replacement of engine 41 and then also the figuring out the staffing costs. We just, we'll, we'll have more discussions coming up in the near future before first quarter budget revisions to figure out where that's going to come from. Hopefully, it will come from EMS funds, a lot of it, but more to come.
Okay, thanks all. We're going to keep moving here. We're on to number six. Agenda item LUC 201206, Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Girdwood Community Land Trust Recycling Project Location to be announced. Brittany Blackledge, or maybe Crystal?
Hi, this is Crystal. I'll be discussing this and Mike will be filling in the gaps. I guess planning has told us that text amendments need to come through a decision-making body. So I guess it would be up to LUC or GBOS to put forward the, the request for an application for text amendment. And Mike, feel free to jump in if I did not get that correct.
Very close. It's, according to code, these have to come from a review, an advisory or a review board in the process. So that would be typical GBOS from a very local point of view. This isn't always the way they've been done in the past, but that's our understanding of how they're meant to be done.
Right. So given the presentations that have been done, there's very little to update apart from the last GBOS meeting, I discussed the Connex going on next to, on the lot next to the brewery, which is GC10. And so the request is for, to expand where recycling is allowable. Because again, it's, it's not allowable under any zone in Girdwood. So we want to clarify where, some spots that we would allow that to happen. So I've got GIP on there because that is what the transfer station lot is zoned. And then we have GI, which is Girdwood Industrial, which is included as like industrial spots in Anchorage you're allowed to do recycling at. And then GC7 to address the recycling that's already being done on GC7 and then GC10. So those are the, the reasons why those zoning locations would be requested that we allow the use of recycling.
Can I ask a question right on that? GC7 is the town square area, is that correct?
Yes.
And when we say recycling, I mean, you know, I know Thriftwoods had a recycling thing, but you're really, is this kind of a manufacturing of recycled material, is it not? Am I?
Right, but right now, right now, we're just working with the text amendment, not necessarily the, our project in particular. Right now, we're just trying to deal with the recycling drop-off not being allowed. the, our project in particular. Right now, we're just trying to deal with the, um, recycling drop off not being allowed in any zoning. So ideally, ideally, we get to go by the brewery, even though it's going to be less than twelve months. Um, but then uh, which does include manufacturing in that, in the GC ten. But right now, this is just purely text amendment for recycling drop off in those zones being allowed. And I, I am going to circle with the owners of other GC seven lots to make sure that there is, um, not a problem for those owners.
I just add one thing. So the, the, the term used in, um, both the Chugiyaki River and Anchorage Bowl areas is, uh, recycling collection. So that's really what we're talking about. So it's collecting, collection of recycled materials. So, um, yeah, GC seven because that's an area where it's actually being done now. But what we, what we would be voting on next month is we would have a, an ordinance form, uh, application basically sitting in front of us. We'd vote on that. It would then be, we'd then go in to the planning and then there's full public process after that. So then we'd have another local meter, another community meeting. Um, I think notice has to be given to everyone who owns property in these zones. Uh, then there's a, I think P and Z, or I forgot which board it is. One of the boards has another public hearing and it would go to assemblies. There's plenty of public process after, um, after we vote on it, including backing Girdwood.
Okay, we've heard about this before. Maybe we, I'd entertain a motion and we could talk about it after we get the motion. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I was actually going to request, Crystal may have a different opinion. I, I think the best thing we should do here is not to vote on it yet until we actually have a, um, an ordinance form, um, re- request sitting in front of us next month.
That's fine.
Jerry, you do have a hand raised, Christina.
Go ahead, Christina.
Thanks for the opportunity. Knowing that is going to be deferred for a vote until next month, I would encourage the applicant to bring forth not only a specific project description, because this text amendment differs from the previous presentations to these public bodies, but also I'd really love to hear from the neighbors in the G seven areas that this would go next to, to understand what the potential impacts to traffic and a variety of other business entities in order to make sure to not impress upon them, um, what could occur over the next six to twelve months until this moves forward, uh, for, uh, formalization. Also, I would caution, um, as in former National Environmental Policy Act practitioner, although not at the federal level, this does stink of segmentation. And so if you put an entity and a practice in one area and then assume that it can easily move to another area in order to expand its operations, such as the manufacturing that Jerry alluded to, you're going to have to restart the process all over again in the new space and not necessarily be granted or grandfathered in to what has been assumed by another property. So the segmentation could actually, um, greater impact the positive impact this project may have, um, and be too hurried. Um, there's a lot of opportunity to get it right the first time since recycling has started and stumbled several times. And since this one does have beyond recycling, which I'm really excited about, again, someone who takes her recycling to Anchorage on a bi-weekly basis, I'd love to have something, uh, local, um, but since it does have a manufacturing component to it, um, it does add for a significant amount of extra permitting to make the full project description plausible and formidable in our community. And I look forward to hearing from other neighbors about that in the next thirty days. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Aaron, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I also think it would be helpful to see a map of the areas that, um, you're proposing to make the change for. Um, it just would be nice to see that visually and, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, I do have a little bit of concern about having, you know, changing the code to allow recycling in the Girdwood Townsite. You know, I think what has been going on, um, with that up to now has been fine, but I'm just imagining like the recycling center in Anchorage, you know, and having huge dumpsters on a lot, um, just might not be the best thing in the Girdwood Townsite. So, um, we can have more discussion about that next month.
Thanks, Aaron. Mike?
Yeah, the, the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, there's this I would say slightly odd thing about the GIP zoning, um, which is good with, um, institutions and parks, um, which covers two quite different things, um, in the maps. So it covers parkland like Moose Meadows, but it also covers, um, kind of institutions, which includes the water treatment plant, um, I believe, the waste, um, the, uh, transfer station, uh, the library, um, community center, et cetera. Um, so I think they're actually incorporated, they're both the same zone. Um, so I don't think from a zoning point of view, we can distinguish, but, uh, there's, I know on the maps they're distinguished, um, with a, with an extra annotation. So there probably has to be some, I don't think we're looking to, um, you know, put a bunch of recycling, um, uh, in, in a Moose Meadow Park, Moose Meadow either. So, or, or, um, the, uh, or the Forest Fair Park. So we probably need to do something about that section. But there's, so there's some technical issues we'll need to cover.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what you just said. I wouldn't want to give the, make the code amendment for both the parkland and Town Square Park without further, a lot of further discussion. But it sounds like we're going to have further discussion.
Um, so to clarify the, the map question, if you scroll down, I am including, um, a lot, uh, outline of where we're wanting it to go. If, if dealing with GC seven and GIP, um, and GI is too much, I can narrow the scope down to GC ten. I was simply trying to address some concerns that are already occurring or you know, some people would think they would make more sense to go by the transfer station. So, um, anyway, I'm happy to simplify their request uh, to what we really need, uh, which is GC ten and, um, any other, uh, so it will be, you know, like, there, there's definitely no, um, I don't believe, uh, rush, uh, because there's going to be so many other public hearings on it, uh, which is why it's fine with postponing the vote, but it's important that I um, give an update because it, it, it did get broadened from the last time, but simply because I was trying to address some community issues that are, um, already standing.
Crystal, um, my just comment would be, um, GIP is fine probably and, you know, GC ten is fine. But, uh, you might want to just remove the GC seven and the GI, just because it's gonna be a little more difficult, you know, the industrial park. I mean, I don't know that anybody has a, probably a big beef about having recycling in the industrial park or having recycling in GC ten. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, yes, I, I hear what you're saying. I think GI should be included because it's industrial and that, that seems to make sense and fitting, um, all throughout the Anchorage, so.
Yes, I may have stated that at GI and GIP, I may have gotten mistaken there, but yeah, industrial park is fine, I think. Um.
Jerry, uh.
Marco.
Oh, go ahead.
I think Marco had a.
Connor had a.
Hi, this is Marco. You know, we could, uh, when we do the text amendment, we could put subscripts on the, uh, uh, use boxes, uh, limiting the area in GC seven and the areas of use in the GIP. The similar subscripts that control, uh, building size in GC seven. Um, so that would be a way to address the current usage, uh, in GC seven, but make sure, uh, large, um, containers and stuff don't show up.
Thanks, Marco.
And then Connor, uh, can't raise his hand. So Connor had a question.
Okay, Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Connor, sure. I had a quick question because, um, I deal with this professionally, um, similar projects and I had looked into it a little for, um, Crystal earlier this year. And I guess it was, it was my understanding from talking with people in the city and maybe, uh, Crystal or Mike could provide, um, clarification, but it was my understanding that if, uh, if there were a zone that were essentially the same as in the Anchorage Bowl, um, that the uses permitted in those, in, in that zone would be permitted in the, in the similar zone in Girdwood, like, um, some standards, uh, that apply to R two, um, A and D and M apply to GR two and, um, the Girdwood Industrial Zone is essentially the, um, I zoning in Anchorage. Um, if you could provide comment or clarification on that, I'd appreciate it.
Not sure I can provide clarification, but that information comes as a surprise to me. So that would imply that, um, well, I don't know how we would write, um, chapter nine to exclude certain things, unless we mention them explicitly. And that would mean anytime there was a change to, um, any of the table, any of the use tables in Anchorage, we would somehow have to respond and make corresponding changes in our tables if we didn't want certain things to happen. And that, that, that does surprise me. I thought the use tables were, um, were sort of isolated to each chapter.
That was my understanding also.
That is a, it's a very good que, it's a good question. I will definitely follow up with planning. And you, Connor, on that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Mike, did you have another comment?
I did not, no.
Uh, any further comments on the discussion? I think we're tabling this until next month. If that, if I'm correct in that, maybe we'll move on. Okay, number seven, discuss first quarter revisions. Fire Department Parks and Rec Summer Staffing. I think we're going to wait for the fire department until we get more resolution on the EMS funding, but let's talk Parks and Rec Summer Staffing, Kyle.
Well, uh, one thing for two thousand twenty-one is that we do have a, uh, grant that will fund all of our summer staffing. And so we'll be hiring for, uh, summer staff this year, um, with them having the same roles of, uh, park work and then trail work. Um, some, uh, crew members may focus more on trail work where the others might focus on park work uh, at times. But either way, we will be using grant funding, um, there. So at the next meeting, we'll probably have a discussion about what to do with the funding that we had, um, established for, um, the, uh, for the two park employees that we had last year that came through, uh, taxes. And so, um, we'll present that next month and we can have a discussion and a vote as to, uh, what to do with those, uh, now surplus funds.
Good job, Kyle.
It's a one-year deal, so we have to keep that in mind, but we'll talk more about it next year, or next month.
Right on. Sounds good. Any further questions on that topic? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. Number eight, review GBOS nonprofit recreation grants, proposed revisions. Uh, who's going to talk to this one?
I think it can be me. This is Margaret. So I'm still here is put in the comments that I've received from all of you, um, the GBOS. I haven't received any public comments on this yet. Um, and so I have this currently in between format, so you'll see that some of the things, uh, as we scroll through these pages, some of the alignment isn't right, we'll fix that. But the content, you know, some of the things you had specific comments on, like changing the date structure. So this, uh, begins to show what that would look like. Um, and then as we continue down, the information for applicants, I think we have some work to do still on language. Um, primarily, this is showing, um, comments that we've received and again, the date change. And as we continue down, you'll see that there were more philosophical questions there in the text boxes on, boxes on the side. So at this point, I don't think we're looking to approve anything or necessarily even discuss it all that closely at this meeting. I think that where we are is probably getting ready to set up uh, another work session. It would be great if we had grantees to participate in that and give us some feedback on the changes that we're proposing. Um, and we still have some sort of more philosophical things to work out, which, um, I think are noted in the comments here, but don't necessarily have solutions yet. Um, so my observation of this is that right now our grantees have concluded their twenty twenty programs and they're probably working on their, um, feedback reports, year-end reports, which are both budget oriented and also have a narrative. Um, and so I think if we let them complete that and then engage them in a conversation at a work session, that might be helpful. But at least at that point, you would have their, um, their information for how the twenty twenty grant went. So each of you would have seen it for the whole year.
Okay, um, I want to say thank you for all the work you've done on this. I started to review it this afternoon. I didn't get through it all. Um, so, yeah, I would like to review it a little bit more. Anybody else have any other comments?
Yeah, thanks, Margaret. Can you remind me when the, um, when in previous years we've, um, put the announcement out?
Uh, usually the announcement goes out in mid-April and the, um, grant forms are available in May. And I think it closes the beginning of, maybe it's mid-May. I don't know. Now I'm drawing a blank on that, but, but it's springtime. We're still not there yet. So if we wanted to revert back to that timing, that would still work.
Right, but it gives us kind of a, it gives us kind of a rough schedule of when we'd have to have this, um, tidied up if we're going to push the application period out.
Right. If we were going to stick with the original timeline, we'd probably want to know that by the beginning of April.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one. This is Brianna. Oh, just thank you for all the thorough comments and it's nice to see it all in one piece. And I also have to look through it. Uh, so it's on the list.
Yeah, thanks, Margaret, for putting it all together. And, um, we should, are we, should we go ahead and schedule a work session? Um, do like a a poll on email for when we're available? Or on the internet? Okay, cool. Thanks.
I think, um, Kathy, did you have a, do you have a comment?
Well, I had a question. Let's see if I'm unmuted. Yes. Um, I just had a question and, because I haven't had a chance to look through this either. But I'm wondering if that would be if, uh, you know, the Girdwood Lions want to build a, a picnic gazebo in the Lions Park, which has been getting used more and more, of course, in the summertime and more with the pandemic. Um, but I don't know, I, it all went by very quickly. So I'll have to look through it to see if there's anything in there that would support that kind of a project or program.
I'll adjust that real, I'll adjust that real quick. Yeah, I mean, it could be a funding source, but most likely, um, you know, as we've talked about with the Lions Club Park, uh, we would probably fund that through operating since it's within the park structures, uh, as at a capital. These are pretty low dollar, uh, grants, uh, depending on how you apply. So, uh, that might be a better avenue, but this could always be an option if Lions Club wanted to pursue that.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Any other questions?
This is not a question. This is Catherine with the community school. I look forward to being part of the next, um, work session on this and just giving a real quick initial look over this. I really like the timeline of having these grants due in mid-September as opposed to mid um, June. That's much, um, easier for a nonprofit to project a budget going forward from there. So that's just my only comment right now.
Thanks, Catherine. I don't see any other hands up. So I think we're going to have a work session on this and we're going to move forward. Next on the agenda is discuss agenda topics for MOA GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for next Monday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, four PM, and it's on Teams. Um, Kyle's going to bring up, I think, what we had on a list. And the list includes MOA allocation for area-wide EMS funding, COVID nineteen reimbursement for Girdwood Fire and Rescue, additional billing items, false alarm and out-of-service responses. These are all additional billing items, false alarm and out of service responses. These are all fire department issues. With discussed CARES Act funding in Girdwood projects. And number three was Girdwood Secure Trash Regulation Zone follow up and discussion. And four was the hand tram status for the summer of 2021. Does anybody have any other items we would like to discuss with the municipality put on the list for next week?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
No, sorry. After you come.
Chief Weston, are you still on? I'll have to follow up with her.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
With the COVID-19 reimbursement, is that already been completed?
Yeah, that's done.
Okay, so we can remove that from the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. And then to the board, I want to understand better as to what you wanted to find out about the CARES Act funding in Girdwood projects.
Yeah, that was my question as well. I wonder if item two is is probably passed.
I think item, I think item two has passed. I think the plan has got its funding and there's no more funding for Girdwood in right in the near future.
Yes, no, we don't. We don't see anything coming from local government at this time. So, okay, we can remove that and then go ahead.
And I have one thing I'd like to add. I think I think it'd be a good opportunity to provide some feedback on the changes in assessed value.
Sure. Yep, we can add that.
I'm guessing what that feedback will be.
Okay, any other suggestions?
Do we have a plan to what we're going to talk about for the Secure Trash Regulation Zone follow up?
This was, this came up in the last quarterly meeting and it was an action on Bill to follow up with it and I don't think it happened. So it's basically the same request as last time, just with new personnel.
And we will.
Oh, sorry. Do we need to request someone specific being at the meeting?
That was my suggestion that Jack Frost is there enforcement and and that's definitely at the bear where group wants to attend and direct some questions towards that. Let us know so we can prep them in advance to come prepared to answer them.
Okay, anything else on this topic? Okay, I'm going to go on. Back to we're up to new business. Item 10, Girdwood Health Clinic Project Presentation. Juan Lee, Agenda Item LUC, Girdwood Clinic requesting GBOS Resolution of Support for Urban Design Commission Review in April. And I think also she's probably going to talk about Agenda Item LUC 210106, Girdwood Clinic Requesting GBOS Resolution of Support for Code Change for Phase Two related to Anchorage Municipal Code. So I don't know who is here. Juan, are you here? Yes, I see you.
Yes, I'm here. Yep, I'm here. But I think Kathy and Lou from the clinic wanted to say a few opening remarks before our team started presentation.
Okay. Who's up? Lou or Kathy?
I think Kathy is. I'm ready. Okay, so thank you, Jerry, and thank you, Juan. So my name's Kathy Troutner. And can you hear me, Jerry?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Kathy Troutner and I've lived in Girdwood for 40 years. I'm currently the Board Chair for the Girdwood Health Clinic. I've been a patient of this clinic and a board member for more than 10 years. And I'm also retired RN. I was 30 years at Providence. So healthcare is really my passion. And I am so excited that we are going to be having a building that is really dedicated and planned for healthcare in this valley. It makes such an amazing difference with those guidelines instead of being in temporary mobile units and just making do with what we have. We've been in that on that corner across from the post office since 2005. And it's really time to have a proper building. And it's not about a shiny, brand new, beautiful building. It really is about the way that it flows through there to deal with patients who are ill, having all kinds of problems, who may be highly contagious. Anyway, it really addresses a lot, having behavioral health issues. So at this point, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the clinic's design team, Spark Design, led by Deanna Nasker and who lives in Girdwood and is a founding partner of Spark Design. She will introduce her team and you've already heard from Juan who is here from R and M as part of the team. And they will show us how a well-planned clinic can actually improve healthcare delivery in the Girdwood Valley. It is really, really an exciting opportunity. So thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. As Kathy said, I'm Deanna Nasker. I'm a newer resident of Girdwood. We moved here in the summer of 2019. And we have absolutely loved it here. So we're very, very excited to be working on this project. Girdwood has a special place in my heart. I got married here 15 years ago and just love the community. I have with me R and M, Taryn Olson and Juan Lee, as well as Ally Gordy, who is assisting in architectural design. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Juan to introduce the site components of the project.
All right. Thank you, Deanna and Kathy for the nice introduction. So like Kathy and Deanna mentioned, I'm helping assisting with the land use planning and permitting for the Girdwood Clinic. We have a a schedule that we're trying to follow. It's kind of critical path in terms of meeting the permitting requirements that the municipality has in Title 21 to ensure that we have designed all the permits completed so we can start construction this summer. It is going to be phased and we'll go over that in the next couple of slides, as well as Deanna is going to talk about the space programming, some renderings to get you excited about the new clinic that's going to be spatially better for the residents and visitors that need any sort of medical services. So so far, we've met with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and my assistant committee, that was last Monday, and Deanna and Taryn were there going over the projects a little bit, but mostly the code modification text edits. You've heard a little bit about text edits earlier. We will cover that in our 210506 item that we're also on the agenda for, and we'll catch on that as part of this presentation as well. And I'm not sure if it's okay to combine the two, but I know there's there's there are two separate items. Anyway, we did a pre-application meeting or conference last week with the planning department, all the different agencies that would be reviewing the site plan, the site design that has to go through the Urban Design Commission. As your code requires for this type of facility, it's a major site plan review under any any building under 6,500 square feet in the GC7, which is what the Girdwood Clinic is in. So that meeting was very revealing. There was a lot of information we gained from there and we've updated a couple of our slides so that we could reflect some of those technical aspects of the code interpretation that the planning department and other other city departments that are helping us with that aspect of the project. Tonight is actually our public meeting that's required by code, but we also wanted to make sure that it was here instead of a separate meeting so that we could provide a really good update to both the board in terms of the code and text amendments and then also what we need to do to get support for the site plan that we're going to be submitting to the to the planning department for the Urban Design Committee, excuse me, Commission. And that that date is February 3rd is our civil date for a May hearing, actually. And so we had planned to come back to you once we have those applications written submitted for your review and resolution of support. And just a little bit about the major site plan application for anyone who's not familiar, it is 65% architectural and civil engineering design as well as 95% or almost final landscape plans. And I also want to add that Bree Keepers here from Huddle, she did the landscape design for the project and we'll be showing you that here in the next slide. Yep, go up just a little bit, Kyle. There we go. There we go. Thank you. So this is what we called a rendered site plan. It's rendered because it has the cool colors, the landscape design, and this has the building footprint. It's phased, like I mentioned, we're going to build phase one first because that's that's the piece that meets your current Title 21 code, chapter nine. It has to be under 6,500 square feet. The other phases, phase two, the new clinic additions and then phase two, the other part of the new clinic addition can only be permitted, designed and permitted later once we get the code updated, the code modification, the text updates in Title 21 to allow more than 6,500 square feet. So that's why we have to phase it. The proposed new clinic is going to be around 5,600 square feet. And we can't build or design anything above that. What you see here is also the circulation, the driveway, how it intersects with Lindblad, the ADA accessible, van accessible spots, as well as five parking spots. And then, of course, the orientation to the surrounding roads and the landscape that is required as part of the code. If you have questions about the landscape, Bree's here to answer those later, but but mostly she kept to a natural vegetation palette, meeting all the requirements for for how much buffering that's required in the in the site plan. And then I think the next slide is for Deanna to talk about the space programming, the floor plans and then the design.
Okay, so in this area, if Kyle, if you can zoom out a little bit, you can see the line that designates phase one versus phase two. Basically, everything to the right is your phase one. And this allows the existing clinic to be operational during construction. So the existing clinic is just off to the left of the phase two line. And so we will have full service throughout the construction process. Obviously, there will probably be, I'm assuming about a week of downtime while they move into the new clinic. But the intent is to remain as operationable, as operational, operational as possible throughout construction. And then once phase one is up and running, we would demolish the existing clinic. And it would be unoccupied during the move in. So the phase one accomplishes several things. So we have a contagious screening, waiting and exam area where we're able to address the issues that we're seeing here with COVID, as well as any future pandemics that may arise. We also have a one in, one out patient care model. So everyone would enter from the right along High Tower Road. They would be triaged immediately upon entering the clinic corridor and be shown to one of the either treatment exam rooms or behavioral health consult rooms. And so it's a pretty smooth flow as far as practitioners are concerned. And then once you're finished with your exam, you go out the hallway between lab and x-ray. You would check out at the window and be able to exit through the lobby. For emergencies or say somebody may have fractured an ankle on the mountain, they would come in through the back entrance, which is directly to the left of contagious exam. They would be seen in trauma or procedure with the very close access to x-ray and be able to be loaded into directly into an ambulance if it was required. The ambulance loading bay is directly outside those doors. Other spaces that are included in phase one are really support spaces. So we have our practitioner workroom, our medication dispensing room, a lab which can do urolysis or sample processing, as well as vaccinations would be stored in the medication room and whatnot. One of the bigger items that has been added is a fully functional laundry room to allow clinicians and other staff to wash their scrubs on site so they are not taking potentially harmful contaminants home to their children and spouses. Following phase one, and if we get the text amendment, when the text amendment is approved, we would proceed with phase two, which includes administrative workroom. So that's for financial processing, the director's office, et cetera. We would have a break room for staff as well as a place for them to change out and change into scrubs. So the contamination really never leaves the building. And then we would have this large behavioral health specialty service room in the back, which would allow for additional services after hours. That area was specifically designed so that we can open up the that portion of the building after hours for group sessions that may need to occur outside of business hours. So the second door would allow us to only open the specialty clinic and the break room in case beverages were needed for various types of sessions. On the left here, what you see is the total square footage of this plan as shown. So as shown, we're including 400 square feet of a fan room, which will be on the next slide. But that puts us at 7,506 square feet. I am positive we can squeeze that six square feet out and get to the 7,500 maximum square footage. And if that modification is not approved, we do have two paths forward. One of our paths is to pull out the contagious exam room and the consultant room and essentially arrive at a 6,500 square foot footprint. Once we add that fan room in, though, we are still over the 6,500 square feet required. So from that point, we have two options and one is to try to get the allowance to increase to 6,900. Or we may end up putting the mechanical equipment on the roof, which is allowed. It's obviously not ideal from an aesthetic perspective. It's not ideal from an equipment or serviceability standpoint. And it's not something we really want to do. It's something we may have to do. If it becomes untenable to put the equipment on the roof, we would then end up having to eliminate the behavioral health specialty clinic. And so that would get us to approximately the 6,500 square foot threshold. And if you can go to the next slide, you can see how much space all of that lovely mechanical equipment takes up on that second story. So it's not really a second story. It's kind of a, it's just a mechanical service space built within the vacancies of the trust on that floor. And then the next slide is our proposed design solution. So this is a view from approximately across the street at the post office, kind of probably in the parking lot. So let's see, your lobby entry is facing north. That's where all of the large windows are. The ambulance entry is the smaller set of doors that are under the canopy. Phase one is in the wood tones and phase two is in the darker wood tones. And we are proposing to include some community bike racks and a bench for service with the Glacier Valley Transit. And I think that's about what you can see here. If you go to the next slide, that's the view from the crosswalk at the post office. So once again, the lobby, the birch trees, spruce trees, you can see the bike racks and the bench a little bit clearer there. And then the last rendering is as you're driving up High Tower, what you would see. All right. And that's all with regard to the architectural design. And now Taryn, I think, is going to cover the Title 21 components.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Deanna. I guess just point of clarification for process here. Kyle, do you have a preference if we discuss the code modification now or would you rather open it up for comments specifically on kind of the architectural design and the site plan layout under the first agenda item?
I'll turn it over to the chair. Jerry, how do you want to handle that?
Um, I'll go, you can go through the the variance that you're looking for here and then we'll discuss the whole thing at the end.
Okay, great. Yeah, great. Thank you, Jerry. I'll keep it brief. So as Deanna kind of mentioned, you know, we're really trying to make sure that the clinic can provide all the services that they've identified would be really beneficial to the community and really offer Girdwood residents and visitors the best service that we can. And so as Deanna really clearly broke down kind of the programming of the space, we've run into the issue where Title 21, under the Table of Allowed Uses in Chapter Nine, for healthcare facilities is only allowed to build up to 6,500 square feet. for healthcare facilities is only allowed to build up to six thousand five hundred square feet in the GC seven district. So what we're asking for essentially is a modification only to this table of allowed uses and only to this one little column highlighted in red. So we're really just asking for a code modification that's specific to healthcare facilities in the GC seven district. And basically, we want to turn that little number one in the circle to a number two, which would allow us to build up to seventy-five hundred square feet. And so again, this code amendment would only be for healthcare facilities. We're not asking for a square footage increase across the entire GC seven district. And, you know, there aren't too many parcels that are zoned GC seven. So I think that, you know, the likelihood of another healthcare facility coming in within the GC seven district and wanting to build as large of a facility is extremely limited. So we're really basically, it's not spot zoning because it's a use-specific standard. So we're not, again, changing the zoning code. We're changing that use-specific allowed square footage. So yeah, that's, that's the only modification we're requesting. Deanna and Bree and our site development civil engineers have worked really hard to ensure that all of the other GC seven district standards will be met through the site design and the building design. So, yeah, we are not anticipating any other modifications or variance requests with this project. Just looking to change that table of allowed uses to allow the additional square footage. I think at that time, I will pass it back to you guys.
I think that's me. Okay, any questions? I'll start out with just, I think you started right at the beginning, but I can't remember. Just a timeline for Phase one.
Hi, Jerry. Oh, yes, it's one with R and M. So if we, Kyle, if you could go back to the very first slide, there are some key dates on there. So Jerry, your question is, what is our timeline for this first phase permitting, correct?
Well, I'm more thinking of construction.
Yes, so before construction can happen, we have to have that Urban Design Commission hear the project at a public hearing. May twelfth is our target date for that public hearing. And once we have that in hand, we can seek the other building permits that are required prior to construction. And Deanna might be able to add a little bit more to that.
So Jerry, what we intend to do is to submit for permit, and our issuance of a building permit would be tentative based on approval at that May twelfth hearing. So we would expect to be in the ground this summer.
That's my question. Thanks. Looks exciting. Any other questions from the board?
Mike here. I have a whole raft of questions, but I'm going to start with some very specific, narrow ones. So the last slide you presented, I think Taryn presented. I think it reads a little bit misleadingly, as if healthcare is, is sort of a special case in GC seven. I don't think anything is allowed over six thousand five hundred square feet in GC seven. Isn't that correct? It reads as if healthcare is singled out somehow, and I don't think it is. So the GC seven, the, I know there was a long process, a long community process back in the 2000s about, about coming up with design standards for the town square. And, you know, large buildings above six thousand five hundred were sort of not prohibited for any use. So I know you're asking just for healthcare to be the exception to that, but it reads as if healthcare is already singled out, and that's not the case. My other question about, other questions about the GC seven thing specifically. One is, there's a bunch of things in code about having an action between the, between town square itself and the, and the buildings around town square in terms of both access and, you know, any, any sort of shared facilities that kind of expand out of town square. And I noticed that in your landscaping diagram, you have a set of trees that effectively screen the town square from the, from the building. Is that because it's a corner lot, or is that, I mean, I'm just not sure. They don't seem to quite match, at least in spirit. Maybe they do in letter.
Yeah, I can.
That's a question for Bree, I guess.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Thank you.
We did look at that since, and you, you kind of answered there at the end. Because it is a corner lot, there isn't a property line that directly aboves the town square. It's right at the corner. So in order to have access to the town square, we would have to cross onto another property.
Okay. And then my last question about the GC seven thing is, my understanding again is parking is, onsite parking is not permitted for new commercial development. And I see you have parking, you have a bunch of parking in the top corner. So again, if you can explain.
So Mike. Mike, I'd like to go back to the table of allowed uses real quick. So the commercial buildings are limited to one, but religious assembly and then government buildings. And there are a couple of other smaller buildings where they are permitted or they're permitted by administrative site plan review without the area increases. But it really is the commercial buildings and residential buildings that are limited to that square footage. I'd say ninety-five percent of buildings around town square in the GC seven district would be limited to that six thousand five hundred. But there's just a little bit of governmental facilities essentially that would be allowed to be bigger as long as they are not exceeding the coverages. So there's limitations on coverage as well.
But I think you take my point that it, the way this reads looks as if healthcare is singled out as being restricted, and that's not actually the case.
No, no. And I think what we're trying to show is that we, we just want to change the health services. We don't want to change any of the other ones. So hopefully, that's clear. And then, as far as parking in the GC seven, our discussions with the municipality clarified that they consider health services a community benefit. And so we are not, we don't have to go for a variance in order to park on the site. They will permit us to have those parking stalls on the site.
Thank you for that clarification. I might have some other questions as well, but I'll let you. No, please.
It's one. I just want to clarify too what Deanna just said. So healthcare facility is considered a commercial use in a, excuse me, a community use in a commercial district. So if it was a commercial use in a commercial district, parking is prohibited on-site. But because the healthcare facility is a community use, parking is allowed. You saw the site plan. We have about five parking spots plus two accessible parking spots. We still need to meet the twenty-four that's required. And the traffic department has weighed in and said that we could use offsite parking, so on-street parking in the area to account for the required parking that we still need to meet.
Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'll let anyone else ask some questions, and I might have a follow-up.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Go ahead, Erin.
I'm just, I guess I'm curious. Well, I think the building looks really cool. I'm curious, I'm not sure where you are in the process, but will you bring, will we see your plans before you take them to the city for permitting or planning and zoning? Jerry or Mike, maybe you can help me out with the land use process as far as like normally, normally, we see the plans before it's taken to the city.
I, I mean, I think this is their public meeting right now, Mike.
For the, I think for the Urban Design Commission process, yeah. But I mean, that there'd be a, this is not, my understanding is this isn't the, this isn't the only meeting that will happen about a code, requested code change.
Okay. Because, I mean, these aren't the final drawings, right?
No.
Kyle?
Erin, you know, once they submit their application, then we will receive the staff packet back. And at that point in time, we'll invite the petitioner back to present and talk about the final application.
Okay. And then I just had one other question, and it's kind of a larger question and maybe more for the clinic board. But it seems like you, you're, you might be having to sacrifice some of your treatment space due to code regulations. And I'm just wondering if, I mean, you may be too far down the path, but you had looked at other sites in the past for the clinic location that might have allowed for stretching out a little bit more your footprint. I'm just wondering if that's a possibility of looking at still, or if, if we're too far down the road with design at this location.
I'm seeing Kathy Trautmer's hand go up, so I bet you she wants to comment on that.
Oh, I just do. Actually, Erin, we certainly did look at several sites throughout the last, well, the last three years during pre-development. And then, anyway, after much looking, studying and all, we finally made a unanimous decision that we wanted to stay on the Lindblad lot. We own the property. There were so many things that were in favor of us being there, and we had time constraints and monetary constraints. So even though we have a longer timeframe, because we got that five million dollars through MOA, we have until the end of 2022. But still, you can see how that timeline is quickly, quickly shrinking away with getting all the, the things done that we need to do. So it was time and money, and the board did the best they could do with the information that we had. And we made that decision that we would stay where we are.
If you don't mind me asking, Kathy, when did you make that unanimous decision?
We had made it at one point during the pre-development when we approved the Agnew Beck Plan. And that was in, I don't have the date of that right here. And then we made a unanimous reconfirmation of going forward on the Lindblad property in November.
The other, the other one would have been, what, 2019 or something?
Yes, earlier. Yeah.
Okay.
And Erin, I know I talked to Lou about this, trying to push maybe for getting something down, you know, by the Frisbee Golf Park down there and starting that development. And he just said that, and Lou's on here, he can describe it. But there's a lot of unknowns if they were to do that, and those unknowns just really killed it. He wanted to try and move down there too. But the unknowns of how much the road would cost, the unknowns of the soil that was there, they just felt like there was too many unknowns and too short a time.
Yeah, I'd like to address this. I find this whole exercise very frustrating. I don't think the clinic has been particularly straightforward with us as the, us in previous presentations. I know I've been told that it was open, it wasn't open, or, you know, that there was still consideration of this change. I've just heard that the decision was made back in 2019. Or maybe, maybe last November. It's very unclear. I've, multiple times, a larger facility was described, you know, it was described as going to be a significant expansion. And now it seems like there's a code change required that was never brought forward at any point previously. Nobody's been able to tell me when, when this was discovered. I really would like someone to answer that question I've asked multiple times. Nobody's been able to give me an answer. Because I know at previous, previous presentations, this has never been brought up as an issue. So it seems a little bit like the requirement to change code to make a larger footprint has been kind of sprung us in the last minute where we're basically being told, you know, you have to do that. You don't have a choice. It seems like this information should have been available way before during pre-development time. And maybe it was, it's just it's never been presented that way. There's been a significant lack of clarity in the process. So this is a, you know, this is obviously a very significant piece of infrastructure development for the community. And I think it's very unfortunate that, you know, the options of having a much larger, more complete facility with, you know, other healthcare capabilities in there as well was lost. And maybe there were good reasons at the time, but I don't think the journey has been, has been particularly beneficial from the community point of view. And we've ended up in a situation where it looks like we have no choices. So that's nothing about this design. I think this design is very good. It's just unfortunate that the journey we've got here has missed so many things which would have been much more beneficial at the community level. So again, if someone could actually tell me when the, when there was a discovery that, you know, what point in pre-development or where else, other place that there was discovery code change would need to be made, I'd really appreciate that.
Well, Mike, I guess my hand is still up. I didn't lower it, this Kathy. We at one point had thought that because of the financial environment, fundraising environment before the CARES Act and all of this, it all looked so grim that we had pared down what we had wanted to do to the point of a three million dollar maximum building and that that would be forty-five hundred, less than forty-five hundred square feet. And so, of course, that would not be anything like what Deanna has just presented and doesn't give us the opportunities for behavioral health that we really want to provide for the community. So our opportunities then, of course, changed when the CARES funding came along. But that was such a long process that we didn't have time to make any other changes at that time. We, you know, then we went, wow, then we should go for the big, big footprint, which was our dream of seventy-five hundred square feet. And I did not realize at that time that that would, that size would be a restriction on the property. I mean, I'm not very, I'm not at all knowledgeable about land use and zoning and so forth. So I am learning under a great deal of pressure. And hindsight is always 2020, and there are a lot of coulda, shoulda, wouldas that, you know. But like I say, we have done the best that we could do with what we knew. And we didn't try to trick anyone. We really thought we were going to have to do a much smaller building. And so, so we just did the best we could do. I'm, you know, I don't know what else to say.
I appreciate that, Kathy. I know that, you know, obviously, we're all volunteers and most boards. That, that's why for projects like this, we employ professionals. So, you know, I mean, did you get any professional advice? The pre-development must have been done by, you know, by somebody. Did you get the information at that level?
We did get, but not about the, the building size. That was through an architect who's very familiar with healthcare buildings all over the state of Alaska, Steve Fishback. And we had a grant through the Mental Health Trust to, for our pre-development. And we went through a lot of ups and downs and planning sizes. And we never imagined we were going to get to shoot for this size of a building. And, and part of the board was really strong about saying, no, go for the big size, go for the big size. But we didn't even imagine that we could raise the funds to even build the smaller new clinic and that that was going to be a big, a heavy lift. So.
So, yeah, I mean, one of the reasons this is, as you probably know, there's a lot of controversy about the CARES money being spent in, on these type of activities within the municipality. So there's, I think there's, it's reasonable. There should be a degree of public scrutiny on this and how we got to this space. So that's one of the reasons I'm motivated by asking these questions. And the other one is just, again, there was a, there's, there's not, there was perhaps an opportunity to look at this when the money, when the large amount of money arrived, it sort of fell in your lap to, to look at this as a, in a sort of bigger picture. And with respect to community needs, not just the narrow needs of the health, the health clinic. Although I appreciate as a board, your own interest in the narrow, you don't have any obligation to consider the community best interest. It's only about the healthcare, the clinic itself. So I do appreciate that's kind of outside your scope to some extent. I'm going to let some other people ask questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move it along here. I see hands up. So I'm going to ask Marco, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. Yeah, I also found it a little surprising that a code analysis wasn't done on this property during the, before the RFP was written. But that's kind of water under the bridge at this point. I do have a couple of comments on the renderings I saw. There's a provision in Chapter nine about arcades and covered walkways in the Gerdoa Newtown site. Arcades and covered walkways being required along all street frontages. I didn't really see arcades on the renderings on either street frontage. Can you address that, please?
So we, on the west side along High Tower, we are at the sixteen-foot to twenty-foot max setback. Oh, we on the west side along High Tower, we are at the sixteen foot to twenty foot max setback. My interpretation and our discussions with the municipality have led us to understand that there is no reason to include a walkway or a covered portico along that side as it would be sixteen to twenty feet away from the actual sidewalk. But then we do have the walkways at the front and what they have indicated is that this would meet that intent.
That, that is not how it's ever been interpreted for us. The, the sixteen, there's a sixteen to twenty foot setback, but part of the sixteen is the eight foot between the sidewalk and the arcaded walkway. And then there's eight feet of arcaded walkway which provides you with your sixteen foot setback. I can read the, the code is, you know, arcades or roof walkways are required along the street base of all new buildings. And they're to provide connectivity to adjacent lots. And that was a central part of the land use regulations when it was written in, in consultation with the consultants that were brought up here to help us with the urban design portion of the Gerwood Townsite. I'm incredibly surprised that the arcades are not on both sides. This is a very important corner in Gerwood. And, you know, I appreciate the, the, the north facade here that's across from the post office. But I'm, I'm not sure the, the facade along High Tower Road addresses the urban design component as, as it is defined in, in chapter nine or envisioned in chapter nine. It looks like the back of the building.
Yeah, that is not at all the intent. The back of the building is the south elevation where we're basically along the easement and
We read twenty-one oh nine point zero four zero C three B. And we've designed a number of buildings in the downtown Gerwood area that have unfortunately not come to fruition. But the, the planning department has always insisted on arcaded walkways in our plans.
And we'll work with the planning department to make sure that all of the code requirements are, are met. This is our first go, so.
With that, typically, I, I understand that's your first go. But typically, we get to see what's presented to the planning department and put into the packet for the Urban Design Commission before it actually goes in. And are we going to be able to see that or is what we're going to see the staff packet after this, after the planning department has reviewed it?
This is what we are intending to submit. So this is, these are the floor plans and the elevations that we are intending to submit just based on the timelines. We'll obviously be working with the municipality to address any concerns that they have or to incorporate any community comments prior to that application, which goes in in about two weeks.
Well, I would strongly encourage you to look at the, the arcaded walkways portion of the Gerwood Land Use Regulations.
Yes, we have done a comprehensive Title Twenty-One code analysis and we are, our intent is to fully follow Title Twenty-One for the GC seven district.
Okay, that's all I've had.
Thanks, Marco. And I'll just follow up on that. If you could get back with us, you know, just research that code and make sure that the, I mean, the code is written for a reason. So make sure those arcaded walkways are not part of the code. But, and put it in the public comments that we think, you know, Marco thinks they are. Next on public comment is Anna, I believe.
I'm muting and starting my video. I'm sorry, I've got funny backlight. My name's Anna Moran and I am a board member with the Gerwood Clinic. Been a resident here since two thousand seventeen. I just wanted to clarify, I don't think Kathy heard a question that was stated. And I wanted to clarify the timeline of us making a decision on the Corollius property. Mr. Engington, we did not decide where we were going to build until June of this year, twenty twenty. We were still in pre-development up till the spring of this year, trying to figure out where we were going to go. Because a lot of us were very, the Corollius property was larger. And then we realized with COVID and the funding sources, we were going to have to build a substandard building. The, they, pre-development people identified that we are growing so much that we need a seven thousand square foot building. But we had no money. So we figured we'd get something decent and maybe raise the money later. And then, so that was money, the first time we made the decision. Then it wasn't until end of September that we actually got the COVID money. And it was our understanding, we had to have it committed by, by January of twenty twenty-two. We even had a special meeting, a board meeting to consider the Corollius property. And again, the timeline just didn't work out from what we understood it. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand it was considered a couple of times. It was just the first time, no money. The second time, it was November. We had to commit our, our design team and everybody else. And we just didn't have the time for development. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. So the, the decision was made, so Kathy said there were two decisions. There was one probably in twenty nineteen and one in November. You're saying there was one in twenty, in June twenty twenty?
Yes, not anything in June twenty nineteen. That's what I wanted to clarify. Twenty, twenty, and again in November twenty twenty.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. And if I could just make one more comment, one of the reasons this building's bigger is because we're trying to deal with COVID. And the cost of building went up and nobody knew COVID was going to happen even a year ago. And the other part of the reason why it's a bigger building is an area that's near and dear to my heart and that's behavioral health. Not a lot of clinics have room for behavioral health. Having that is going to be so important to our community. When I first came on the board, we had somebody coming in doing services a couple of times a month, then a couple of times a week, and now it's full time. And one of the things, important components of, of substance abuse treatment, behavioral health is having a place where you can have group therapy. Now you're wondering, why do I know so much about this? And so I thought I'd introduce myself. I'm a former Superior Court Judge. And I was instrumental in establishing a wellness court, which is an alternative court for people dealing with substance abuse. And so I know that having a room and having a, a situation where people can face one another is really, really important. So I urge you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thanks for the clarification. So what I, what I hear then is there were many changing things. It was a money issue initially. And then it stopped being a money issue, but it was a time issue. Then you added that with an extra year. But the decision was made kind of before you had two of those pieces of information. So, and I appreciate it's very, obviously it's, it's, it's good to make a decision and stick with it even when the circumstances change. But it sounds like that's part of, part of the issue and part of the reason why we're where we are now. So again, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Okay, for any other comments? I don't see any other.
I'd like, I'd like to say something there, Jerry. It's Tim.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, you know, on the sixty-five hundred square foot thing, it, it is in the code. And I know everyone thinks that it's in there because it was what the community wanted or, or such. But that, that's just not the case, guys here. When we had the, the land use committee meeting on chapter nine, we voted it down as a community overwhelmingly. It was like eighty-two percent. There was a hundred people at the meeting. Nobody wanted this code. This code was shoved down our throat. It was not ready to go. It's a nightmare. It's still not ready. It has some really good things in it, but it's got so many problems. Well, it's got so many problems that nothing, nothing's been built. You know, Marco was just saying he's, he's tried building things and he can't get, just can't get them through, you know, the parking, the many other issues. So that sixty-five hundred feet, that, that was a number that was, came up, not from the people from Gerwood, but from the, the people that we hired, out of state consultants from, from Colorado. So to add a thousand feet to that for this one corner and even have an argument over it for something this important is, I, I'm flabbergasted that we're actually arguing over this. This isn't, this should not be an argument. We should just allow this to be done and move on and realize that this code has a lot of flaws and we shouldn't, shouldn't give these people that are doing such wonderful work. And, and there's a lot of volunteers, done a lot of things to get this building and to get us a quality health, you know, center in Gerwood. And then as far as expanding, both lots that, that about this are vacant right now. And you act like it, it can't be expanded. The lot between this building and Chair Five is, is, is empty. It's just sitting there empty. The lot towards Ski View end is empty. So it's not like it can't be expanded in the future, people. There's, we just need to get this going. What's going to happen is the same thing that almost happened on the post office when I was up the chair of the board. And we almost lost the money because it took so long to get, just to get all the signatures from all the different municipalities, the state, the federal government, just on how we were going to park in front of the post office. And the parking in front of the post office is not the way that it was actually finally approved. We just had to go with what we had to go with to get the building built and not lose our funding. So kind of, kind of look at the big picture here and, and realize that, that number is, is not something that was a well-thought-out number.
Tim, I think nobody really disagrees with having a larger building. There were some people that were hopeful that we would start development down on Corollius with this project. And that was kind of why some people were pushing maybe for that other site.
I just respond to something, something Tim just said, if that's okay, through your cherry.
Sure.
Yeah, it's just an, sorry, I put my video on. It's just an ad really. So, you know, whatever the past is, we're in the process of updating the comprehensive plan. And, and then immediately after that, we'll go into updating zoning and Title Twenty-One, Chapter Nine, which is a bunch of work. The thing that's holding us back at the moment is funding. We need more funding. We're looking to finish off the comprehensive plan. It's probably about one percent of the grant that was given to the clinic. So it's not that much money or it's a lot of money depending on your perspective, but it's about one percent of that. So just a quick ad that we'll be doing what we can to try and raise the money to finish off this task and get the comprehensive plan done. And then we can fix these issues that we need to fix. And I agree, we need to fix them. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Mike. Christina, you have your hand up.
Thank you very much, Jerry. First and foremost, Juan, you know me. Deanna, please don't interrupt me. Lou and Kathy, start taking notes. So here's what I gotta say. First off, Cabana, appreciate the history lesson. I'm looking forward to the next ten to twenty years. Second, Jerry, I don't care what you feel. I'm looking forward to the future too. And I'm very interested in this community asset of seventy-five hundred square feet providing for us in another location. Second, I am a resident of one five zero High Tower. I live across the street from the Mercantile. I have been very happily a satisfied client of the clinic for the nine years that I've lived in Gerwood. I saw Carrie before I started seeing Jen Swift and a variety of others. I am absolutely over the moon ecstatic at the expanding capacity, capabilities and caliber of talent that this clinic has attracted under its new leadership. Therefore, I challenge the fiduciary responsibilities of its board, including your honor Moran, that the forerunner funds used for Mr. Fishbach be used for a comprehensive evaluation of the sites that could accommodate seventy-five hundred square feet. The rationale therein includes parking. At this meeting, I do not see the owners of Seawolf Physical Therapy, the Yoga Shack, the Ski View Inn, Sea View Inn, and the Chair Five, which are immediately about this corner, which is also across from a federal establishment and also part of a bus stop on the Gerwood Valley Transit. Further, I do not see within the design rendering any offset for the snow load that would come off of the roof onto High Tower and a sidewalk that is already pinched by public parking. I also do not see adequate parking for the expanded staff that is already featured at the clinic with the expanding capabilities to help out with COVID. But then also not being able to offset any of the busy season in which parking impacts local businesses as the one aforementioned and along the town square angled parking, which some are, some sets are, some sites are offset in order to accommodate the snow load in the area. I also have not as a patient, nor as a community member, nor as a property owner nearby, received a survey on what types of services I'd like to see at that clinic, how that seventy-five hundred square feet could be used as a future patient. And then also as I would like to see a business in the neighborhood expand further. Lastly, I have not seen any due diligence for the other services that would be combined with the clinic, such as the ambulance. I really don't see how an ambulance would pull up to that emergency room and whether or not the hallway that would lead to any services provide the adequate response needed for our EMTs, nor any of the Station Nine that come down for offsetting our fire department to date. So what I've seen to date has been prohibited uses. And we've already seen how that's gone with recent community meetings on Alieska View. And not knowing what Title Twenty-One, Chapter Nine and Code Evaluation is after one pre-meeting with the agency, the UDC meetings are going to be quite tumultuous. And I will be part of that public process as a community member, as a resident, as a property owner and as a patient of the clinic. Thank you.
So before somebody responds, if somebody wants to respond to Christina, I'd ask somebody from the board to approve to move past ten o'clock because we're not going to get through here.
Make a motion to move, to go past ten.
Looking for a second.
All second.
All in favor by voice vote, aye.
Aye. We also, I think, are under the, under new rules now of no item can last longer than an hour unless we vote. And I don't actually know what time we started, but we're probably approaching an hour.
We're probably approaching an hour. Does somebody want to respond to Christina from the group or?
Sorry, can I just do a point, can I just do a point of order? Can, can we extend it beyond an hour if necessary, just so we've got that done formally?
Okay.
So this item will extend. I'd like to make a motion to extend this item about at least half an hour.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Voice vote, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike, okay. So who wants to speak next? Raise your hand. Anybody? Kathy, your hands up. Is that for speaking or from before?
You're muted, Kathy, if you're trying to talk.
Christina, that was quite a list and I did take some notes. And we have done two surveys. And we get, we continue to ask patients, and you are a patient at the clinic, you said, for input and suggestions. And so we have gotten suggestions from, you know, current patients. But some of the other things I really am not able to respond to. And I think those are things like the offset for the snow load and so on and so forth. Those things need to be addressed by our design team. And perhaps we can have a conversation in another place.
Okay, Erin, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I had a comment similar to Christine's about the, where the snow is going to shed. And I just was curious if they had decided on a roofing material and whether that was planned to be a shedding roof or whether it would, the snow would stay on it.
If I can answer that question. Do I, Jerry, do I need to ask?
No, you're fine.
Okay. So it is designed to hold the snow. The sixteen foot to twenty foot setback is what is designed for the snow to shed into. And so that is essentially where the snow will be going is in that sixteen foot to twenty foot setback along High Tower. As far as the shedding roof in the site, it is all being pushed to the south of the parking lot.
Okay, so it, the roof will shed. It's going to be a metal roof then, I assume?
No, it's actually an asphalt roof as requested by multiple or structural engineers really pushing for a asphalt roof. It's similar to what will be across the street at the post office has an asphalt roof as well. And so it will shed. I mean, it's Gerwood. Of course, the snow sheds no matter what you do.
Looks like the roof is fairly shallow angle, not very steep. Well, it looks like the roof is fairly shallow angle, not very steep. So I think an asphalt shingle that angle will most likely not shed. That was my concern because I've seen metal roofs shooting snow off further than 20 feet. So yeah, that answers it.
So just as a comment, I got a 312 roof with asphalt chingles and my roof does not shed.
Perfect. We're at about three and a half, I think, but close to that.
Does it snow on your side of the valley, Jerry?
Not as much as yours.
I heard it's very sunny over there.
Not as much as yours. It's surprisingly the difference, but I got a lot of weight on my roof. Next up, who wants to speak? Anybody? Comments?
Hi, Jerry. This is Wan Lee with R and M. I just want to address a couple of things with this site plan. I think it's to Erin's question earlier. So Erin, what we're showing here that Carl has up for us is what I call the rendered site plan. So it has this, it's everything is to scale. It's taken from the Civil Engineering Site Plan. But we wanted to make it a little bit more palatable for the public for this presentation. What goes into the Urban Design Commission packet is 65% engineered plans, 95% landscape design plan, architectural plan. So there will be a whole set of plan sheets or structural, there's electrical, there's mechanical. So all of that will go into a packet. What we've distilled from that packet, and it's still being developed, obviously, we're not, we wanted to have this meeting so we could get, take input that will inform the project, the plans as we go forward. But we'll have that whole packet. There'll be a big narrative. We have to address how we meet the code, the comprehensive plan, which is getting a little bit old, like I said, and it's currently being updated, but because it, that process isn't completed, we are working with the Girdwood Area Plan. So you will see a packet that is more than what we're showing you tonight. This is just part of our presentation. So I hope that addresses that question. It's, you know, we're always working against a deadline. So our seminal deadline to the municipality is February 3rd to get on, get in the queue for the Urban Design Commission is, is a two month process. We submit the packet and then it gets routed. So there's a lot of time, the staff reports, it gets routed to you guys, the Girdwood Board Supervisors for review. The members of the public can get access to the packet as well online, submit comments, email the planning department, all of that. So this first phase has to do with design and the requirements of the design to meet Title 21. The second phase, which isn't gonna happen, for, you know, it's not gonna happen right away or concurrent with this design process. But that will go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's a very rigorous process that will have us coming back to the community and to Girdwood Board Supervisors as we move through the drafting of what that text amendment will look like. I think the question earlier was, can we see the updated design before it goes to the city? I think you can see it concurrently, but we probably won't have it done and given an advanced copy to Girdwood Board Supervisors probably before the February 3rd as we're all working to. There's a lot of disciplines that Deanna is hurting to make sure that everything is consistent and meets code. So I hope that helps answer that question about process and what is, what we are asking. And the Urban Design Commission, they're the technical review board that looks not just at the land use, but the design aspect. So I hope that helps answer your question. If not, I can try to help clarify anything else. Thank you.
It does help. Thanks for that clarification.
Jerry, I also had one more note that I think I can address of Christina's questions. I'm not sure that I caught all of them either, but if it's okay.
Sure.
So regarding the, let's see, where did it go? Coordination of the ambulance and emergency room. We don't technically have an emergency room. It's a trauma and procedure room. So it's a little bit less critical than emergency. But we have been coordinating with Michelle Weston. We sent her plans, I think on Friday of last week, and we've been addressing the ambulance access. Typically, the space between parking stalls is 24 feet and we're providing 30 feet. So we're providing more than what's required already. But we are looking for EMS serviceability coordination and making sure we do all of the due diligence with regard to making sure Michelle and her team can service the building.
Thanks. Jean, you had a comment or question?
Yes, I appreciate the, that many of my questions were asked by Christina. One of the things, and then, and then I also appreciate Tim's comments on the adjacent lots. And I do believe I saw something recently that one of the lots, the one between the ski do, it, I think it may have sold. I don't know. I thought I saw that. But nevertheless, the idea that I'm trying to think about here is expansion. And I heard that there is a second level, but that's mostly for mechanical things. With the code being as it is and going for changes or anything, would there ever be the option of expanding so that it would be a two-story facility? Because some of these other businesses that may very well could be associated there or some of the ideas for as we grow as a community that we might be able to address without, you know, having to run into anchorage for some of these emergencies that might happen. Would that be an option for expansion?
Deanna, do you want to ask, answer that?
Um, so yes, I can answer that. The way that the current code is written, we have not considered a second story as an option. We are just limited by square footage. So in, in theory, yes, it could be an option. There are some provisions for two-story buildings around GC7. We haven't done an in-depth analysis on what that would look like. But it would require a bigger increase to the overall allowable square footage for healthcare facilities in the GC7. Likely instead of going to the two, we would need to go to the item three, which I believe is a 10,000 square foot footprint.
So I just, I'm thinking, yes, I understand that that would need to be addressed. And even in the future, that would be something that you could maybe look at. But in how the, how this building is being designed, is in the design, is that a consideration that could be taken, something that could be taken into consideration that wouldn't necessarily preclude it or in the future make it something that would be so expensive that, you know, it wouldn't be worthwhile?
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's actually a really good thought. We haven't obviously discussed it with the board of directors, but it might be something worth considering. The space where the mechanical fan room is in on that high end of the Phase 1 roof could be designed in such a way, I'd have to work with the structural engineer, but it could be designed in such a way that there were exterior windows pretty easily able to be cut into that exterior wall to maybe allow for the administrative suite to go on to that second floor with ground floor access for, you know, chiropractic or massage therapy or whatever complimentary medicine may make sense in the future. I, I don't think it's impossible. One of the things we would have to consider those accessibility, which we haven't obviously planned for an elevator footprint at this point. But we can, we can certainly look at that and see if maybe where the laundry room is could be a future lift if needed.
I'll make a comment on that. I know with any building you put an elevator in, costs skyrocket. Next up, Marco.
I had one more follow-up on that. I'm sorry, Jerry.
Okay.
I saw in the designs and you talked about the idea of having the laundry for people to be able to do that for contaminated items. And that brought up, I, I looked at it, but I didn't see, is there a shower facility also for anybody that needed to come in if they, you know, for were any kind of not just viral or bacterial contaminants, but chemical contaminants for emergency treatment?
So right now we do have a shower outside of the staff change out area. So that would be if a staff member came into contact with an isolated or known contaminant. I have not talked with staff about programming for if that would be available for patient use, but my, my gut is that they haven't yet thought about it. We will be, we're working with a medical equipment planner for the trauma and procedure room to ensure that items like that for emergency use, we would be addressing in the trauma and procedure area. So if someone came in with chemical burns, I'm not sure that they would actually be treated here or if that would be an EMS event. So they have a certain threshold of care that they're able to provide in this on-site. And that may be a level of care that is beyond what they are currently staffed to handle. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Marco, you had a question or comment?
Thank you, Jerry. Just a comment since I was part of the process that helped craft these original land use regulations. Most of the building size limitations for the GC7 area were crafted around the narrower lots that are common in that district. This, this piece of property is roughly twice the size of most of the lots down there. So I don't see this building size increases violating the intent of what the size limitations were written around. So, so that part of it doesn't bother me. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the, the arcades were a central feature of the discussions in how the downtown area is supposed to look. And just to kind of give a little bit of background, the, the eight-foot strip between the sidewalk and the edge of the arcade was for snow storage off the sidewalks. And then you had eight feet of arcade minimum. That gives you your minimum 16-foot setback to the, to the wall of the building. And then they did the 16 to 20-foot front yard setback or the, yes, front yard setback so that we could vary the walls of the buildings by four feet or walls that were over 40 feet. So that's where all those numbers came from was the requirement for wall variations of a four-foot setback steps and for walls over 40 feet long and to accommodate the arcaded walkways. And I personally will push to keep those design elements in this project in my comments to the city.
Thanks, Marco. Christina?
Thanks, Jerry. I just wanted to clarify the, the timeline. As I look at my calendar, we heard from the group representing the Girdwood Health Clinic at Land Use on the 11th. What I heard them say tonight is that they had a meeting, a pre-meeting with, I'm assuming Chris Shutey and company on the 14th. And yet it wasn't until the 15th that the Girdwood Fire Department was included in the planning documentation for going forward with this design?
So Chris Shutey is not one of the typical municipal players that is included in the pre-app meetings. Pre-app includes planning, long-range planning, current planning.
Traffic.
Yes, traffic, watershed management. There, it's a whole host. It's everybody within the building department, building review department. It was at the request of Mark Pinello that we reached out. And honestly, it just hadn't occurred to us. We haven't been at a point where we could show the fire department a site plan to react to until that January 15th meeting. So you were at the January 11th meeting and you saw the site plans there. What we're showing today has changed and it has been modified and, and it's, it's a process that we are going through to refine the site design. And so honestly, we weren't at a point to get Michelle's input before, when we sent her the documents.
Jerry, this is Wan Lee. If I could add to that. So this is a typical process for the municipality. If we had been under 4,000 square feet or under, 4,001 or under, we, this is a, it's a permitted use, but because the code says that if you're over certain square footage in the GC7 in your healthcare facility, you need to go through a major site plan review process, which is at the Urban Design Commission. So if we had been a smaller development, we would just go and get our administrative site plan review. We wouldn't have to have a committee meeting, but we would likely come here anyway because it's, it's good. So I just wanted to clarify that we are meeting all of Title 21 requirements. And we will be going through that Urban Design Commission public hearing process where everybody will be noticed. Part of the requirements is sending everybody a notice about this, this meeting tonight. We also went to the land use committee last week, excuse me, last Monday because of the code modification. We want to ensure that there was support as we work through that. Because as, as hired designers and planners, we cannot be the petitioners. The Girdwood Clinic would be the petitioners with support from the organized community groups such as Girdwood Board Supervisors. And the land use committee was the right committee to take that up to. So I hope that answers a couple of questions about process, timeline, and what we're doing as we move forward.
Thank you, Juan. Jerry, if I may follow up with a, a small comment. It's not a question, but just a comment for consideration.
Sure, quick comment.
Great, thank you. As a former member of G-Boss through Michelle and as the Parks and Recreation Supervisor, Girdwood has emergency response procedures that help out with situations such as earthquake and pandemic response that require a whole set of additional considerations, particularly as it involves our clinic. So I would hope that this group continues to engage the emergency management services to address any of the incident command system protocols that would be in place through G-Boss for future planning protocols on this site, which has its physical limitations. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to move forward as it's 10 after 10. I think we've had a long enough discussion here and we have a couple more issues on the agenda.
Could I just take a moment to thank the presenters? Because I know this, both LUC was a very long presentation and tonight was a very long presentation. And I appreciate your patience asking, answering all the questions we have.
Yeah. Good point. Thanks for coming and thanks for sticking around this late. Okay, we're gonna go on. Next on the list is Agenda Item LUC 210107. Carolyn Hayes, request for GUS Resolution to support for dimensional variance for 1051 Timberline Drive to be presented at the March 11th ZEBA meeting. Connor presenting. Connor?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for sticking around. Another late night with G-Boss. Carolyn Hawes hired the architects to represent her and also do some design services for her property on Timberline at 1051. And through our code study, we discovered that the, the lot that the current structure is on, which is operating as a duplex, and we've affirmed that has had that use for a number of decades, that the lot under current code is too small to, for the permitted use. And so for our proposed design of, of adding a two-car garage and of adding a two-car garage and living space to one of the dwelling units, we needed to apply for a variance specifically for the, for the, for the living area portion. Because it will be a illegal, or I'm sorry, a illegal non-conforming use of a structure. That means that the use is grandfathered, but it can't be expanded upon. But, and, and so in, in, in trying to meet the intent of our design, we wanted to provide Carolyn with an area that, that was, that had greater accessibility for her as, as a person who is experiencing decreased mobility and to provide an opportunity for her to live on the property in one of the dwelling units that's already there, as well as have a two-car garage for herself and the other tenant would use the existing carport on the property. And so in order to apply for a variance, we will have to meet certain criteria. And we go before the zoning board of examiners and appeals in March. And they'll be the ultimate decider on whether we meet the criteria or not. But, but basically, our argument is that because the, the adjacent properties, some of which have duplexes on them, are able to expand those with greater living area, that, that she should also enjoy that right to develop. If we were proposing just a two-car garage with no living area, we wouldn't be needing a variance. And, but because we are wanting to provide her with basically a, a master suite that, that is, that, that has greater accessibility standards, so wider doors, larger bathing facilities, and the potential for her to live on the property, we were, we decided to pursue a variance for that as, as the whole design. And, and, and in the packet, there are floor plans and elevations that, that explain how that addition works. We came before land use committee last week and had a, had a good conversation. There were some questions about how large the addition would be and how much of that would be living area, as well as whether we were proposing to add a third unit, which we are not. We're, we're, we're limited to all, all all of GR2 is limited to two, 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 two family and single family. And only single family can have accessory dwelling units. And so we're not adding another unit to the building. We're just expanding the, the uppermost unit to provide a better bathing in, in bedroom area for Carolyn. And then the, the addition is, I'm sorry, having a little bit of technical problems. Be with me. So the addition includes 710 square feet or so of, of garage and about 950 square feet of living area. And the, but the footprint of the, of the addition, sorry. That comes to a total of, of about 1,650 square feet of gross floor area. But the footprint of the addition is only 932 square feet. And that's, that's, that's including a number of floors over each other. But really what, what we're, what the ask of this variance is, is provide the 950 square feet of living space that includes the, the stairs that you see, as well as the master suite, which would have a bedroom, bathroom, closets, and a small sitting area. And then the, the addition of a toilet room on the top floor of the building to minimize the need to go between floors to use facilities. So that is all of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions that the Board of Supervisors has or members of the public. I thank you for your attention. Thanks.
Okay, who has a comment? Anybody have a comment?
I have a, a wild comment, not a question really, because obviously I saw this presentation last week at Land Use. And thank you for adding in some extra details that I know came up at Land Use. And I was also confused about the, the, the current use, whether there was, whether that, the fact it was already a duplex, already two units. So thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I see Marco's hand up. Marco?
Just a couple more comments on what Connor presented. Carolyn's grandchildren live right next door. She's Mandy Hawes's mother-in-law. And her dream is to move from Southern California to live next door to grandchildren. And so what we're doing is trying to make a, she's owned this property for a number of years, but to make it so that she can live, live in it and have a protected place to park her cars and a protected way to get up to her, her living unit. The, the current stairs on the outside of the house are exterior. And the whole house suffers from snow shed danger. And as part of our brief in this design project is to mitigate snow shedding off of roofs onto where Carolyn would access the building.
Thanks, Marco. So this will come up. Are you, are you looking for something next month, Connor?
Uh, yes, that's right. So we were, we tried to time the, the two meeting scheduled to, so that when Girdwood staff get the staff packet, we'll be able to go before G-Boss and Land Use, Land Use Committee again next month and seek action then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board or the public? Not hearing any. Thanks, Connor. I'm going to go on. Next, thank you. Next one, number 12. Agenda Item LUC 210108, Request for Girdwood Resolution to Support for Title 21, Chapter 9 Subcommittee Approach to the Adjacent Commercial Parking Standards for Girdwood. I assume, Mike, you're going to speak to this?
I'll speak to this briefly. So this isn't about the, about the code and changes itself. When we submit this, we've had two meetings with the planning department and traffic to discuss our proposal. And one of the things they want in the application is detail about the current parking conditions across the community. And our whole process, the whole way we've approached this is basically, say, with one or two exceptions, with one exception really, the majority of the commercial space within the community, there's already adequate parking. So the existing parking quantity is adequate, yet the code actually requires more parking than exists. So we're in this, this space where if we try to change or build anything new or change use of current things, you hit the requirements of the new code and suddenly the amount of parking shoots up dramatically, even though what exists now seems to be adequate. So we've gone through this process basically to try and match the, match the requirements of code to what actually exists now in most cases. And that, that's the way of solving this particular problem. But we need to sort of document that. And there's a couple of ways they suggested documenting it. And one way is to have a statement from the community, i.e. from GBOS, that we believe the current amount of parking in the majority of the commercial areas, the exception being Olympic Mountain Loop, the majority of the commercial areas is adequate for need now. So I haven't got that resolution put together yet, but I will have for next month. So my request from the Title 21, Chapter 9 Subcommittee is basically that Girdwood, the Girdwood community approves this statement that we have adequate parking in most commercial areas now. And that justifies the process we've, we've made, that we put that in the application. It gives us a, gives us a piece of paper we can wave. Any questions? I think I mentioned, I've gone through this a few times, so I'm getting clearer each time, I hope.
When you write up this resolution, you're going to make us comment that exception for Olympic Mountain Loop?
We have to, we have to acknowledge that the situation there is very complex due to grandfathered rights. There's, there's a bunch of, there's housing in the, I believe it's the Aleiska North Building. There's, or maybe it's, sorry, it's Aleiska East, maybe. There's a bunch of housing there. There's a bunch of businesses there. There's the Sitzmark. There's the access to the ski resort. There's a whole bunch of different uses, most of which are parking on private land. And that does not, that is not adequately modeled in the way that, that area is. But that's an area we're not actually going to be changing in this code. So we won't make the situation any worse.
Got it. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. I will look for questions from the public. I don't see any hands raised. Any going once, going twice? I think I'm at the end of my agenda. Am I correct?
You're correct.
We can move on to a turn.
Hey, thanks, everybody. Appreciate everybody taking the time and volunteering.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Day dry.